All right. Good evening, everybody. It is six o'clock and we are ready to start our meeting. I will note that the media is being recorded. And Carrie Patel is on Zoom, so we are going to roll call. So I'd like to call the Concord Carlisle School Committee to order.
And I'll call the Concord School Committee to order.
And we're going to roll call.
Anderson, present.
Who's present?
Morano, present.
Rainey, present.
Rankin, present.
Whit, present.
And Carrie Patel.
Patel, present.
Thank you. All right.
Hi, Carrie.
So here we go. All right, we're working back to Zoom and live. I feel like there's a little bit of an echo in the room. And I'll hear the echo, little feedback. I'm moving this back a little bit. I don't know if that's the right or wrong thing, but.
Is anyone's volume still up?
Doesn't sound like that issue.
No, it doesn't. Oh, okay. All right, so we're going to start off with public comments. So we will start with anyone in the room, and I do not see anyone in our room tonight. And we'll go online. And if you have a public comment, you can use the raise hand feature. And as a reminder, you have three minutes. And I do not see any public comment, so we will move on to our correspondence. So I will start tonight.
You were the only one that had anything.
Yeah, at the region, we had four pieces of public comment. They were all from the same individual. And they were regarding cell phone tower, AED machines, which we do have at CCHS, and Wi-Fi upgrades. And CPS?
We had some duplicative correspondence that was just sent to both.
Okay. And then we'll move down to our consent agenda, which you should have all of those items. And would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda? No?
No, but could we just walk through them very quickly?
That's not.
Agenda, sorry.
We can still vote for them as a bundle.
Right, but we weren't going to have discussion on it. If you'd like to discuss anything, we can remove it.
Remove it.
Just. I don't want to remove it. Okay, I'd like to remove the staff request so I can ask a question.
Okay. All right, so let's vote on item B, C, D, and E. So what I would like to just say is.
Thank you.
Yeah. Before I enter a motion, I just want to send a word of thanks to the donations from the Concord Community Chest, United Women's Club of Concord, and the Concord Association Music Parents.
Thanks, everybody. So I will, I would make a motion to approve items B, C, D, and E on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, and we're going to, any further discussion on this? Okay, let's roll call. And we'll just try and remember where Carrie Patel is in the roll call. We'll do our best.
Anderson, I for both.
Who's I for both?
Morano, I for both.
Patel, I for region.
Rainey, I for both.
Rankin, I for both.
Whit, I for region.
Okay. And on to, so court, staff child requests.
Yeah, my usual question when these come up, I'm just curious where we stand in terms of overall numbers for staff, students, and any concerns about class sizes by virtue of where we stand?
We're up over 100. I don't have the number exactly. We can bring that to you when we bring updated enrollments as school opens. Of course, that's across all the schools. In terms of class size, we're holding quite nicely. We're watching still. We have silver registrations coming in. So we had already added in a couple of spots, I think we, but you know this earlier in the summer, with a thorough kindergarten teacher, a preschool teacher, and we're still actually looking for an EL teacher at Willard. But things seem to be holding pretty nicely. So we'll bring you all those updated things, but still changing daily here at the moment.
Thank you. Move to approve.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Second.
All right, and any further discussion? No? All right, we're going to roll call this again.
Anderson, I for both.
Who's I for both?
Morano, I for both.
Patel, I for region.
Rainey, I for both.
Rankin, I for both.
Whit, I for region.
Okay, thank you, everybody. And on to the superintendents and the chairs update. And why don't, do you have a preference of you start or I start?
You want me to start?
I can start. Great. I'll start. Okay, I'll start. I'll start. I'll start. We'll go to Alexa, then we'll go to Dr. Hunter. How about that? All right, so for, just for my updates, we have a bit of housekeeping to do. So you've got the packet in our Google Drive, so I just wanted to make sure everybody knows how to locate that. So we have the Concord Carlisle School Committee Drive. Everything in there, they're all public documents that are usually attached to our agenda anyway. So there's nothing, you know, that we ever deliberate on. And so in terms of the packet, we will try and keep that folder. It's really a preference thing. We had a little discussion before meeting that, you know, some people prefer the links, some people prefer the packets. So if anyone has any comments or any thoughts on that, I'd love to hear them if you find that user friendly or not.
So links are needed for the public?
Yeah.
They don't have access.
We're going to continue to do that.
So we're going to update this agenda after the meeting because we, I know we talked about it, but we need to begin to observe our three day policy about any documents.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, for this meeting in particular, you know.
I understand, but I'm just saying.
Right, right. We're going to work towards our three day, which we will have. So it'll be on Fridays. You'll receive everything on Fridays.
Three day would be Thursday afternoon.
Which will do the best that we can do Thursday afternoon.
Either that or we should change the policy.
Okay.
You know.
So we will work towards.
Policies, that's it, did you know off the top of your head?
It is. I will find it for you. Send it to you.
It's okay. Don't worry. No, 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 I don't need, you don't need to send it to me. I'll find it.
Okay.
Agenda, I believe.
Yeah, and sometimes we have the agenda set and posted, but there might not be everything quite attached on there, so we'll work towards that. And then in terms of the schedule, I'm going to ask Erin to just pull up a document that I sent to her earlier. It is within our Google Drive, just to share that. So Alexa and I have started working on a schedule. We had the same document last year, and this was for the school committees for FY23. So we've added a few columns to make it a little bit more user friendly, and so that future school committees can also kind of see what is the annual business that we do every year. Things like, if you can scroll down a little bit, Erin, if you look down, we'll have like October enroll. We'll have Youth Risk Behavior Survey on yours that we report on that. We'll have, you know, we have budget items. We have the CPS capital plan. So something's happened every year. That will go into the annual business. There are school committee business things. If we have reports or presentations, we'll link that on here. And then I just like to keep everything in one spot. So if you can scroll up again, Erin, just to the top. The agenda, the agenda overview in the packet will also be linked there. So it's really, again, a preference thing. However you like to read things, I like everything in one spot. So I can go back to see like, what did we actually talk about? It's just easier to find things when you're going back to look back to presentations and things like that. So that is also in our Google Drive. We have a lot of folders in there. We're just trying to kind of keep it organized so you can find it easily. But feel free to poke around anywhere in the drive. And just if you have a suggestion, we would love to hear that. And if we can make anything a little bit more streamlined, we'll do that. But this is really for planning, so we will hopefully have the entire year kind of planned out. And obviously, things will come up and things will get added to it, but.
But I think that the goal is that this document will have a skeleton of the year. That's like a pretty good skeleton that really is sort of meant to guide us. And I think our hope is to allow your team to plan better. Our team here to anticipate better and to ensure that all of the annual business does occur every year, that we don't skip it. But then, you know, for future committees, again, to be able to use this document to guide them. And then also, like Tracy said, to keep track of things just in a much more singular place. I don't know, anyone who's been a chair before, like, we're always constantly going back to the website, looking through the agendas. When did we discuss? When did we vote on that capital plan? And you're clicking and then you, you know, it's, it can get really cumbersome. And this will be sort of a nice singular document for future committees to be able to reference and hopefully make their work easier and better.
And I do think that even the, the Google Drive has made things searchable. So when you're looking for a particular item, you can actually search it in there versus just clicking through agendas. So, so that is for us to use and be as user friendly as possible. So thank you, Erin, for sharing that.
And where is that housed?
I know it's in the drive, and there's a folder called like, I think, School Committee Schedules.
Okay.
Thank you. So just if you poke around the folders, and if anyone has any suggestions, ideas, thoughts, we are open to that. You know, we're just trying to put everything in there that, you know, we found useful over the past year. And but if you, you're like, oh, we need this. Like, you can either add it yourself. I'm not sure you have editing capability, actually. Just let us know. We'll add it in there and get things in there that need to be in there. Okay. All right, then I also had, sorry, I'm just going back to my other document. The only other thing I had was the MAS C conference. We just need to really firm up who is actually going. There's now an option to do the Friday only event. So what I'm going to do is just pass this around so Erin can get us registered for this. There still is early bird special pricing. So when the Friday only option just came out, that might change people's thoughts. It is around the Veterans Day weekend. So there's just that. So there, I don't know if everyone got these two things in the mail. I'll just pass them around. And if you would like to go, just write on there your name and when you want to go. And then I'll, yeah, just write on there, right ahead. And then I can just, you know, kind of organize, or if you want to think about it and then get back to me. But like by end of week, I'd like to have Erin get us all registered for whoever's going to go.
I wonder if we could share among ourselves who thinks they're going so that we get some coverage because.
I am not.
I work independently, then we might have five people one day and zero another that might not serve us well.
Yeah.
I had said to Tracy that I'd like to go but can't go the whole like four days. So I'm like, one maybe.
Remember, your kids aren't going to be in school during it.
Thursday, Friday?
Yep.
Yep.
That's why I'm not going.
Yeah, and I have some challenges around going this year. So I don't believe I'm going. We also, if we have people going, we do need to also have a delegate. That's why I figured we should start this discussion now to see who can go.
I'll probably go Friday.
Friday, okay.
I'll let me think about it.
Because you can't go any other one day.
I know Friday is the only one day option.
And that worked for us. I did a Friday too.
I think you did that last year.
Last year, you went Friday. We were.
We were both. You were, me, Sarah, and Tracy were two days.
Two days.
And you guys were just the Friday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's great. It's great if we can go, but it just, you know, depends on schedules. All right.
That's a vacation for schools.
Well, no, it's.
Veterans Day is that Friday. And then K to five, I believe, has a professional day for conferences on the Thursday.
Yeah. I don't think there's a day off at the, at CCHS.
No. I think it's just K to five. It's not even six to eight, but.
Yeah. So if I were to do one day, it would only be the Friday that I could do. I couldn't do just Thursday.
Well, you can, you can.
We pay for both.
Pay for.
Oh, I see. I see. Okay.
Okay, just think about it. Look, look at it. You know, I don't know if they've updated their website with anything additional. You know, I want to see the whole program with everything and when it is, but I don't think that's out yet.
No.
So.
They just have the AI.
Yeah, they just have the AI, the guest speaker, and then kind of ideas of what some of them, you know, workshops are going to be, but not actually, it's not totally out there yet. So. And that's all I had. So give it to Alexa.
And mine is really brief. I sent you guys earlier. In our July 20th meeting, we had discussed very briefly the fact that we now have firmer estimates on what we're going to be spending this year to transport students from the DCHD on the cell ship. It's in excess of $200,000, which is a challenge for us. That's not money we generally have lying around. So we had entertained and actually sent a formal sort of memo alerting the finance committee and the town offices to our dilemma and thought of, an idea might be to utilize free cash to help offset that. Because the reimbursement schedule is, to be kind, lacking. So it just presents us with a big challenge. We did receive word back from both the finance committee as well as Carrie Lifler's office that with respect to town bylaws, if we were to do that, we wouldn't be able to see any monies until really next spring after town meeting, and it would necessitate a warrant article to allocate that free cash. So we obviously have therefore like a delta of time that we need to solve for because we don't have the ability to not pay as we go for the transportation. So there's nothing to discuss tonight because it's not on our agenda, but we'll probably end up having an agenda item to discuss this on the 22nd. You mean the 20 seconds? That's in a week. It's doable, if not the week after, if not our.
You won't have a lot more information. You'll just decide how much you can talk about based on what you have.
So did you have a question?
No, I just was gonna walk over and get in the house.
Okay, so I did, that was my only update. And both of their letters have been sent to you all, and they're in the drive under the budget tab. There wasn't a great place to put them, so I put them there. So that's it. That's my update.
All right, and then Dr. Hunter, great, to your update.
I'll just highlight some of the busy summer that we've had. We'll certainly be giving you more details on all of these things. It's, things evolve. I think we'll start with some of the big capital projects. And we'll start with the obvious one, the middle school's moving along pretty nicely. A little glitch, the, the heavy rain a week ago had a bit of impact, but they're recuperating this week for sure. So the foundations are being poured, and I think we're going to just continue to see really great progress. So it's really fun to be over there and watch it all happen. Obviously, we're also in the bulk of making sure we have safety plans in place for the return of the kids and how that'll all work now that we're in an active construction mode. The high school obviously is in similar mode on the roadway with the project there well underway. So we are expecting substantial completion by end of week next week. So both entrances are accessible. They're putting in curbing mostly this week. They'll have, probably for the 25th, they're going to have one layer down. They're going to have to keep working after that, but we need both entrances open for the start of school, and from there, we'll strategize with them. But that, again, a little bit of rain delay here and there because it's been a tough winter summer for that, but they're on track generally. We had some other handful of smaller projects that feel like they've had substantial impact. The high school guidance suite has had a wall come down so that it's less less significant in terms of barriers to kids to access the room. And there's a window now to the lobby and just feels much more inviting. And there's going to be a little bit of furniture change there to welcome them in before you kind of felt like you were walking into a doctor's office with all these receptionists waiting to wait on you. And it's part of the big efforts that the guidance department has towards changing the outreach to the kids and the vision of the department. So excited for that. And probably the last one I would name is because of the fifth preschool classroom, we had a temporary wall to take down over here at Ripley. It had been subdivided, I don't even know how many years ago, for smaller settings to use. And we, we needed the bigger setting again. So there's a little bit of work going on down there. And I guess finally, I'll know, you might have noticed the sidewalk work and parking lot work is going to begin here fairly soon. They've got some erosion guards up along the sidewalk and everything's marked up. So you can tell there's going to be some work coming quickly. So it's been a really busy summer for Russ and his team and managing all of that, plus cleaning the buildings. We had obviously summer school at Alcott, so that's a significant piece for the teaching staff, for the custodial staff, for everyone involved. And then Case Collaborative, we hosted at Willard right up until last Friday. So that turnaround's really quick because their program's a little bit longer. Hiring, we're in pretty, we're in really good shape for professional staff. We have just a couple of positions left to fill. Support staff is proving to be a challenge this summer. There's a lot of openings and not huge pools of people. So I think the, the short, the staffing needs in other districts are finally starting. We're starting to see them in the support staff environment. So we've got some work to do here in the next 10 days to be sure we're ready, especially in some of the special ed settings. It's been a great start for some of the new leaders. I can't say enough. Justin Sparks, Angel here as Director of Student Services, the three new assistant principals, one at middle and two at the high school. It's just been a really, really strong start from all of them. We can see all the competencies we saw in the interview process are now we're benefiting from and enjoying the energy they're bringing, just even from day one in July. So more to come on lots of other things, but those are the highlights.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And by support staff, you're talking about tutors.
Tutors and assistants.
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right.
All right.
A couple of questions.
Go ahead.
So on CMS, the construction entrances on, on Old Marlborough.
Yep.
And the property is going to increase significantly. I'm sure you're well aware. And we walked by there. And I'm just concerned about people not aware that that's.
Yep, so there's safety plans being executed right now. They're, for one, removing a bit more of the scrim so that the visibility is better. We're going to staff that so that there's an adult there should, because of everything you just said, the sidewalk's still open. It's a construction entrance, even though obviously we've communicated the hours of prime time to try to avoid. And the police are highly involved. So we're, I think, tackling it from all directions.
Could you just also message through the town messaging, if they notice, news and notices or whatever, what's going on for those who aren't parents or?
We can try, sure. Yeah. Yeah, just extra caution over there. Yeah, it's, it's already a busy spot without the kids there. So, yeah.
And it's just the traffic, to cut through traffic on top of everything else. It's just, it's insane.
Right.
Right.
So we definitely are going to have more. We've had a crossing guard there at the one crosswalk. We're going to, we're working with the police to staff and getting creative how we staff it. But the police are going to have at least two people there from now on, all, that all the prime in and outs during the dismissal and pickup process. So.
That's great.
Yeah.
So the parking is all going to be to the left? I see them.
Correct.
It's moving along.
Yeah, and that'll be done the end of the week. So staff parking is all now to the left of the building. If you're facing the building, there's no other parking available. But that, that temporary lot is going to be ready for the.
And in my half, the big question is, what are the big orange shells? So maybe you can like.
Try to get you an answer to that.
You might have my guests with those.
Got it, okay.
And then at CCHS, are we doing the walkways as part of this project?
Yeah.
Okay, there, that's.
They may not all be done. Our absolute focus was the driveway, yeah, but we are, and the lights.
Sorry, interrupt.
No, no.
And that one section we're not doing because, is that correct?
Which section?
There's a section of the road that didn't get paved.
I'm not sure without seeing it, but I was over there twice this week.
The one like in front of Beatty, that one?
That one's, because there's additional work going to be done there, it might be a different process there. So Beatty has its own plan that got built in. So I know there was some discussion of exactly.
Deviation, we couldn't dig it up.
I don't think so, but we can, we can check and find out.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you definitely would do that.
And even with the paving, we talked about, you know, it will be ready for school. School will happen.
It looks good.
You know, it'll be good. And then weekend work, and they'll avoid, you know, some of the events that happen at the high school.
Yeah, they've already got this calendar for September, so they know two out of the four weekends they can be there, the other two they can't. We've encouraged them to use as much of Labor Day weekend as possible since we're closed on Friday, so.
Okay, great.
Good question. Does Hill have the project manager rep on site every day that we thought was going to be there?
Budget manager rep?
So the, the Hill, the project manager.
Ben Miller is there every day, all day, every day.
Good, thank you.
Texting us regularly while things are going on.
Yeah, thank you.
And he works, CTA has a site manager there all the time, too. So the two of them are really the leads, but Vince, Vince Austin's been excellent, so.
Anyone else? Nope. Okay. All right, on to the superintendent's goals. So you received Lori's goals. The draft of her goals came, I think, on Sunday, and she's going to walk us through those. And I'll turn it back over to her.
And I thought I'd offer highlights and not read to you, obviously. I think worth noting is my intentional priority on student learning. So you'll note there's more goals there than there has been, and that's very much by design for multiple layers of work on student learning that I think we're going to be tackling, very aligned with the strategic plan, which obviously is the precursor to all of the work that I outlined here. So the first one is to really look at those MCAS recovery data points that you heard about in June. We're going to obviously aim to hit all of those, so more to come on that. We use our own in-house data to support progress and MTSS to intervene, et cetera, et cetera. We're going to really be looking at, and this is, this is work I want to personally do with the leadership team to sort of figure out where we're going and set the stage. But deeper learning, going more in depth with higher student engagement, more inquiry, more active learning. We've got great bits and starts to that across the district, but being more systemic about it. Harvard University runs a deeper learning coalition that we may not be, they, they, they take 12 districts a year, which isn't very many, but they consult with a lot of others. So we're very interested in connecting with them. Then really looking at prioritizing well-being. And I purposely put that in the student learning goal because social emotional learning is obviously student learning. So that said, it also loops into the services we're providing to kids, the data we're collecting. But with such a significant rollout at K5, social emotional learning makes total sense that it would be part of our student learning work. And then last is to really look at special education with Angel in place, looking across all the programs, both intensive and otherwise. I think inclusion, Angel and I have talked, defining inclusion, what the model is, what the role of each staff member is, et cetera. And really getting that to be a common place that we're looking to go. And we have more data work to do there. I think, you know, to talk about the MCAS work, we know for sure the special education students are rebounding slower from the pandemic, and we want to be sure we're trying to adjust that as effectively as possible. Professional practice, really, I decided to name the shelter as a professional practice goal. It certainly is still a pretty significant part of my work. I was on today with Early Childhood and Head Start to talk on the three and four-year-olds to see what options there might be for them. So it's constant work. It's not necessarily huge lifts every time, but it's continual liaison, liaising with Andrea, who's the family coordinator. Willard's right now scheduled to take 10 new kindergartners in, so that's going to be a significant lift. There's just enough monitoring. And then my squeaky, squeaky wheelness that has been very well received from the state, DESI, DCH, et cetera, continues to be really important. I took a call this afternoon from another superintendent because these shelters are popping up pretty more and more, as you obviously know. So now trying to, you know, share our wisdom or troubleshoot or brainstorm and whatever. So. And then obviously DEIB continuing that work. I highlighted a few pieces that are top of our list this year, restorative justice, which Kristen's a huge part of. Andrew's strategic plan and really looking at those goals for the year. The incident reporting system, I think, is also a significant rollout. We've only dabbled in that at the middle school. And then continuing to foster our partnerships with Metco. Just point of reference, the leadership team is day two of our back to school retreat next week. We're at Metco Inc. all day on Tuesday. So going to get the tour and meet with Millie and be there as leaders and then welcome our new families to the district. So. And then the last two are bigger and broader and ones you're highly involved in, the obvious budget building, capital needs plans, which we're going to talk a little bit on tonight in terms of capital. And then the new middle school. There's, there's one thing I've learned in building new schools is you don't act like it's not another goal because it is. Even in, even in or especially in construction, but continuing to be a piece of that team, both at the professional level, the building committee, working closely with Justin to manage the site so that we're all safe and high functioning despite the extraordinary construct. I sat there at that meeting today in the trailer, the construction trailer, and two big trucks had come in, one's dumping this big thing of gravel. I look at Justin, I'm like, you know, you guys don't stand a chance over here trying to keep kids focused. Ben Miller, he's like, you block the noise out. It becomes white noise. I'm like, yeah, but look at that cool thing the truck is doing out there. So I'm sure it'll all be normal, but right now it's new. Really exciting. So those are high levels of what I selected to bring to you.
Yeah, and I do like the way you've aligned them with the strategic plan so we can really see, you know, what's happening across the entire district, your goals. Hopefully, our goals will fit into that and we can all, you know, just piece together nicely.
I just, thank you for asking for them early. I think this is the earliest I've ever done them. What a gift to do them in August when my head's clear and able to really then set the stage for the rest of the year, rather than trying to put to paper in the middle of the busyness of the school.
Right. Great. Any other?
Yep, Court.
Couple of comments if I might, Dr. Hunter. The first one, MCAS recovery goals is outlined by DESI. If we indeed are going to follow those as our goals, can we make them explicit? And secondly, can we call out what might be our own goals? Because I'm not sure that every single district would necessarily follow those goals.
We can certainly link the goals that Kristen's presentation included that DESI prescribed for us, that we are supposed to be on track to meet. We certainly have higher goals than that. Kristen sent a note to the staff this week that said we're always aiming to be 10 to 20% higher than the state averages. So we could name some of those for sure.
I think the more visible we make them, the more real they become.
Achievement goals and student growth goals. And then we have a general population goals, and then each subgroup we have goals for.
And that would mean it gets linked here and other elsewhere, if I'm correct. Okay. The deeper learning. They hosted their national meeting in eastern Massachusetts. I think it was last spring. It was interesting. I think this next one is going to be California, but I'm sure Harvard's doing plenty of.
Yeah, we met with John Meta, boy, how many summers ago was that? For the pandemic. Everything's pre or post pandemic, right? Pre pandemic. So we're really excited to partner with them. So they're both doing. So we're really excited to partner with them. So they're both doing that dozen, they call them, the deeper learning dozen, which is what you're referencing. And they've had more interest. So they're also doing some other consulting outside of that and have invited us. They have some other conference coming up in the summer of 2024, which will be queued up for if we choose to attend. So excited to to join up with them.
Interesting group.
It is. Yeah.
Just in terms of wording, foster deeper leader, you might.
Oh, it's probably a typo.
Look. Forgive me for being picky, but I do.
Oh, God.
I do read this, can read this.
Post COVID or pre COVID, whatever, leader. Yeah.
Page two, DEI, equitability. I think you're going to work that words.
That is a common word in the equity world now.
Right.
Equity. I don't know if I love it, but it is.
But you've got, you've got an adjective inclusive and a noun equitability. So I'm just not.
All right. Yeah, we'll clean. I'll reread. No problem.
Sorry to be fussy.
Nope. I had a pretty good COVID brain.
Going out at some point. And finally, I appreciate your reference to the school committee on, on budget to one of our.
Absolutely.
Regular priorities. Thank you.
Dr. Hunter, just have a question about MTSS and UDL and maybe, I don't need a long presentation, but I think it'd be helpful to the, I read that MTS is, S is the infrastructure and UDL is sort of the engine, right? And universally designed learning sounds really interesting and but sounds like it might require a lot of professional development or.
It could. Yeah. Again.
Need your trainers and that kind of thing, right?
Yeah.
So maybe sometime this year, we could discuss in our reports section. I don't need a deep.
And actually, your question is what I want to work with the leadership team on is like, where are we with UDL concepts? And where do we want to be? And how are we going to get there? So it isn't defined yet. So I think your, your questions are.
Right. And it's a multi, I know it's a multi process. By the time you get there, it's going to be something new. But yeah, I think.
Although UDL has held the test of time, I feel like the concepts, and I think the deeper our educators' toolkits get, the more tier one will strengthen, which I think is something we're seeing both as the intensive programs come online, as we try to stretch to meet student needs academically and behaviorally, and a big part of UDL is engagement, which we also know is about well-being. So.
Also, for those people who have concerns about removing leveling and really addressing all learners in a single classroom, I think is really like, sounds magical.
Right. Right. So more to come, but we're happy to share more as we develop it.
A couple of questions on it. Um, so I, I sort of looked at this from the perspective of like five-year, the strategic plan, our goals, your goals, and that's really my purview. Beyond that, everyone else is in their own little world. And I, I think that it's all like when I looked at our goals and your goals. I think it's, there's a lot there that, that is aligned, but it's all, it's not necessarily linear, if that makes sense. The way I was looking at the strategic plan, well, if we want to be at all of these, like very measurable, which I think Kristen's team worked really hard to do. If we want to be at all of these places, what do we need to do this year? Like, what are our measure, what are our measurable outcomes this year that we're looking to achieve? And you're one of five, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
And so I think in, in, like, I know we're talking about our goals here in this conversation as well, and I think that this applies to ours as well, but I guess I'm curious how, I would love to see in the, like, if, I don't know if we see a next draft, or has you refined it, like, how you think about your goals as it pertains to the like specific measurables in the five-year plan, if that makes sense.
Yeah. And I think I can at least a high level answer your question. This is what I think is year one's work.
Yeah.
For the.
Like, but some of, some of it is pretty like.
Broad.
Broad. Yeah. Or vague. Like some of it, like I, I wouldn't know how to say like, oh yeah, you did a great job with that. I think there's like a million ways you could answer it. It makes sense.
And I think part of, so here was the challenge of doing it in August.
You don't, you're not.
If I was going to write something measurable, I would probably name that I'm going to spend so many meetings with the leadership team focused on UDL.
Yeah.
Is that as helpful as telling you how far we actually got with the planning and bringing you a deliverable that says, here's the plan for working on UDL with the staff. So that's where I got a little like, I don't want to prescribe, I haven't met with my team yet, so I didn't want to prescribe that while I sat by myself in August.
I think that's fair. And also I think.
And your, your feedback's fair.
Talked a lot about like in conjunction with, like, this is like a team.
I don't do any of it alone.
Get and respect that. But I think a little bit, I'm, I'm interested in a little bit more. Like I can give you an example, like, I think Quartz was one of mine, the MCAS data.
Yeah, that's easy.
Is that just to add it in so that it's?
That part's easy.
Yeah. But also like I had to Google what this, the Harvard.
Yeah, there's.
Things really interesting.
Arguing things here for sure.
But like, I think part of this, like, some of the, the student well-being and mental health piece of it, what, like, what, what are, what, I don't know, what are you looking to see? Like, how, how, what is it at the end that you're looking to see that we can say like, oh yeah, or we didn't quite get there or, you know?
Right. And I think part of, so you're, you're totally right. I want to give you those. So some of the things I debated were how many referrals are going to Care Solis? And part of the challenge is, is referrals a good thing or a negative? Like, what's the goal? Are we trying to reduce them or are we trying to increase them? So I got a little stuck all by myself on Sunday, trying to figure out what metrics to put in. You're totally correct.
Yeah.
I would love to see that our kids are giving us, you know, higher, higher ratings on the guidance supports they're getting for mental health and not just college prep, right? So is that a student survey? And we don't necessarily have the baseline for that, but I think that's the goal of the guidance department this coming year is to kind of remarket themselves to the, to the kids. We're about to talk about bringing in Cartwheel, which will actually give kids therapy. And so I think what's the goal there? Is it, again, how many kids we're onboarding to Cartwheel? Or is it how many guys at Cartwheel and don't need further therapy? So. Yeah. So you're totally right. It's just, it's hard to figure out which way to go with it. Yeah.
Just jump in just with one thing. Out of all the four pillars, I think that second one of well-being is probably the least far along. And us being able to track it.
Yeah.
So the, the starting, you know, like for the first pillar of student achievement and multiple means of success. We have MCAS scores. We have, you know, we have star scores. We have so much data. So we already have the baseline. I think the most important thing that we could do this year was get a really good culture survey that we can give three times a year over the next five years, so 15 times. And with that, track how kids are reporting, how they feel, because we can't do that. We have the youth risk behavior survey, which is really about risky. But it's not as much about how do I feel coming into this building, being in this part of this community? That's, that's like, that'll be among also the ones that Dr. Hunter mentioned that, but that'll be probably our key metric is we're just going to ask kids how they're doing.
Yeah. The other thing really, and this is me talking about all the thoughts going on in my head this summer, the more you look at what DEIB and deeper learning and UDL, all of those are meant to broaden student engagement and authentic learning and the joy of learning. And the more we do that, the better we are at DEIB, the better we are at mental health, like, and it all shows up in the academics. So part of it is all paths lead to academics and you gotta find the tools and the measures of the progress along the way to get to where the academics reflect other things.
I think on mental health, like part of the goal could just be like launch Cartwheel. You know what I mean? It doesn't have to be the metric.
Fill all 50 slots. Right.
Or, or yeah, just launch it, like have an effective first year, like it doesn't have to necessarily be.
That should be the goal because you wouldn't even have this.
You don't have any.
Like, you don't have the rules anyway. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I get it.
Like, it, it doesn't have to be. Yeah. We might not have to.
I love the iterative dialogue we're having. Like, I think this is really, this is important stuff, right? So like, what does success look like? And then.
I imagine with every, all of the, everything that's floating in your head and happening on a day-to-day basis, I can't imagine putting it in paper on what you want. It's an impossible task.
Yeah. The strategic plan is such a huge guide to this, for sure, which was a great place to be this year as we came in off a new updated plan.
And what I find helpful too is, you know, at the end of the year, we can see it when Lori provides evidence of everything she's done with her goals. You can see all those spaces where, you know, the MCAS data or whatever it else is in there, like we can see it at the end. It's hard at the beginning to say, what is the goal? Because with mental health, I mean, that is one of those things. Obviously, we want to have well children here.
I mean, what I really want to say is more kids feel really great about themselves and less kids are in crisis, right? So that's really the bottom line goal.
Tracy's point, I, I don't, I'm embarrassed. I don't remember how, what is sort of the periodic schedule? Because I might even just put it in this schedule document that we have where we've seen your evidence, like, and, and to Carrie's point, like, because it's so ongoing, would it make sense to get like a quarterly update?
Twice a year, I usually do it. January and then right when you do the wrap up.
And that probably feels right.
So last year, I, and I love feedback on this. Last year I linked a lot of actual documents and data to the goal. That's what that blank column was for.
I loved that.
So I, I liked how that worked. That was probably the best I felt about it in all the years. So.
I think you guys like copied that for ours as well, which was really helpful.
Yeah.
The more.
Consistency is, is helpful.
Better. Yeah.
Yeah. And it's just, you know, to go through and really look at everything that happens within the course of the school year and to have all that evidence and be clicking through your links and seeing everything. You're like, oh, wow, there are a lot is really happening in our schools, which is, there's a lot of great things happening in our schools. Obviously, we're always looking to improve and be reflective and all of that. But I do think that this document helps us do that, to be reflective. And then at the end of the year, kind of assess, how did we do?
Yeah. So I'm you in on the 23rd of January.
On our schedule document.
There we go.
So.
I, I'd like to come back to your, your comment on Care Solis because I think that, and lots of other kinds of reporting can pose that same dilemma. Is this an indicator of trouble or is this an indicator of getting out of trouble?
Right.
Put it very simply. And so I can't speak for this committee, but I'll speak for myself. And I think I'm speaking for my colleagues. I think you've got to trust us that we see both sides.
Yeah, no.
See both sides and, and data's data and data tells different stories. And we've got to be smart enough to know more than one story emerges from this data. And there's a third story, not just as simple, is it a pro or a con, which is a little too simple. But also are we putting our resources in the right place?
Yeah.
And sometimes we are and sometimes we aren't. And, and those answers evolve with time.
And I think the narrative to go with the data is really important. Like, here's what the data is and here's what we're seeing. And there's, you know, here's what we're seeing in the, you know, whether it's, you know, CCHS, the middle school, the elementary schools, to have a little bit of that, like this is what the reality is. Like, here are the numbers, but this is what we're seeing. I think that's helpful for us to know.
Great. That's all good, really good feedback and more to come.
All right. Anyone else before we move on? And Carrie Patel, we are not forgetting about you. If you have, ever have anything to say, you can just use the raise hand feature and I'll just keep watching for you. All right. All right. I'm going to turn it over to Alexa. She is going to run us through the self eval, the practices, protocols and the goal setting.
Great. I, Dorothy Presser was out of the office for a big chunk of the summer, so I just received the data from our self-evaluation yesterday. So I apologize the late hour in which you all got it. So this document that you're seeing that Erin's sharing on the screen is essentially the exact same sort of analysis we did last year. Last year, if you'll remember, Glenn and Dorothy took us through the school committee self-evaluation. They both agreed that that was probably not necessary this year. And then subsequent to that, because I thought it would be helpful for us to, I'm sort of a visual person to see, to sort of categorize it like, hey, we're doing okay in these categories, but these categories like we really need to focus on. I also think too, last year, that document helped us sort of put forth our professional practice goals. So, so I kept the same kind of metrics. This year, we did have full participation in the self-evaluation and she's not present, but I just want to thank Sarah Wilson for participating. You know, she certainly didn't have to. And we do appreciate that. So we were able to get all seven members from last year to participate. So the good news is that it seems that we've made, from our own perspectives, tangible improvements to the, the things that the MASC thinks should be, you know, measures of a high functioning school committee. So I think that's, that's the good news. I always say, I think we can always continue to improve and we should never rest on our laurels. So, but nonetheless, those were the big picture categories and you know, well done, everybody. And again, thanks for participating.
Alexa, you got raw data and this is your interpretation?
Well, it's there, there. I just put, I just created categories that were aligned with the categories we had last year. So if you had a hyper majority, six or more members suggesting that we did well, meaning things are embedded or sustainable, which is the highest rating or well-developed. I, I defined that as we're doing great or we're doing excellent. If we had a majority, four or five out of seven members saying, you know, we're in the top two categories, I define that as doing well. Where there was a mixed bag, where people were kind of all over the place. I think there was one question that somebody skipped. So I think we had a three and three. That was like where I went, the mixed bag. And then when we had a majority of people identifying our status in the bottom two categories, which were developing, meaning we're making some progress or underdeveloped. Again, we had, oh, and I'm sorry, I should have written four plus majority because I had, I literally used the old document. So we did have seven people participate. So again, hyper majorities, majorities were how I defined it, but the data is their data. And I can, obviously I can forward that on to you guys. I just didn't, I forgot to do it because it was such a time crunch.
So you'll send the committee the raw data? Okay.
Great. Any other questions?
Raw data, including the comments or just the raw data?
Yeah. Everyone can get the comments. Sure.
You post that on the meeting link?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
I guess Alexa, my comment is this kind, I think this obligates us to spend a little time with how do we maintain the successes that you've referenced here? What do they, what do they really look like in practice?
Yeah.
And more importantly, where we need attention and development, what are the indicators that we have to conclude that thus have to change?
You mean in the areas needing attention?
Yes. It applies why, why the data, you know?
Yeah. Yeah. Sure.
So should we just add that on as part of our discussion next week?
I don't think we need to. I think we'll just, we'll just make it public.
Make it public.
Do that.
As a discussion item?
A discussion item on how to respect each other more, you mean?
Well, maybe plan, plan the plan for working this data, plan the plan for how we work with this data over time. I mean, I don't think it's a one-off, throw a switch and put this away.
Well, I also think the data can inform our.
Yeah, our goals. Yeah. So it, it is meant to, we're actually, so we're doing that this evening. Because, and then if you remember, that was sort of the path we took last time, last year. This will help us inform our goal discussion. So we'll, so I guess the first step will be that. And then the second step will be to continue to refine it in our goals.
Great. Okay.
Thanks, Erin. Okay. Okay. So then practices and protocols. If Erin, if you could pull up our practices document. So every year we commit to reviewing our practices and protocols document. I asked folks to reexamine them, make any suggestions for those to me so that I could have them shareable tonight. So I've done that. Erin, if you scroll down, I think there are some in red. So there were, and I, I just sort of threw them in there because they seemed to sort of go, well, they don't really go together, but I threw them in because the first four were kind of very foundational. So these were in red, the four suggestions. I don't mean to say they necessarily need to be protocols or practices, five, six, seven and eight, or even that we include them. But I'll read through them really quickly. One was liaisons will only orally report on items relevant to the business of the school committee. I think there was some in, in past years, we tend, we have sometimes liaisons reporting on things that might be newsworthy but not relevant. And as we look towards keeping our meetings efficient and we looked across other groups, we're kind of an outlier there. So just to refine that, I thought that was a good one. Liaisons will not report on activity or news from groups not included on our specific list of groups, organizations to which we liaise. So as we all know, we, when we seat the committee, we identify groups, whether they're government organizations or community groups that we find that are relevant to us and might have business that are, that's relevant to our committee. What we want to do is ensure that we stop reporting just on like other things that might be of interest to us, either personally as members or might be interesting to the school committee, but. or might be interesting to the school committee, but again, not relevant. So just to make sure that we, we cut down on that. And then seven, we had used recognitions last year to sort of work to tell us as members, what's going on in schools? We thought, oh, maybe that's a good idea. I think there might have been some consensus that when we look at recognitions, they should be more literal. You know, I can't think, Justin Sparks' new principal was named principal of the year. We recognize that. You know, whatever. I couldn't think of something off the top of my head. You know, the Nordic ski team wins the state championship. Someone gets, you know, the, I think, I think Fox's seventh grade choir won a silver medal at some chorus competition.
Packet?
Yes.
It's in the packet?
Yes. So and it was also in the agenda overview, Cynthia. It's in both, it's in both places. So anyway, so that was sort of the idea behind that one. And then reports, and then so as such, then reports. These seven and eight should probably be provided into one now that I'm looking them. Reports and presentations about activities within the school become a part of the regular business agenda. So those were the four that I got. I wrote one. So anyone want to discuss them, whether they think they're good ideas or consider them for the inclusion. So we'll discuss them tonight, vote on them next week. Any thoughts?
You just said you would include, I, I like seven and eight separate.
Okay.
When you just said to include them, because I do think that it again separates a recognition or a report and a presentation, because that is really the goal, is a recognition is a recognition and the reports and presentations are separate.
I do think you could merge five and six though.
Yeah.
Okay. Both about how a liaison operates.
Okay. So the idea, oh, I'm Erin sharing. So collapse. Okay. I'm going to write these notes.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Other people.
So they're not in the, I can find them. They're in the SC protocols.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay. I can move into the packet.
Well, so this is, this is the challenge within Google Drive. I'll just comment on this. And I don't know if anybody else, you can't put them two places.
You gotta do copy.
We could PDF it. We could PDF it. And put it there as a draft and then keep it in the protocols.
I've been doing copy of, but anyway, it's fine. Okay. So Carrie's suggestion, and I will put these like in a summary docket, Carrie's suggestion is collapse five and six into a single practice. Tracy's suggestion, even though they're kind of related, is to keep seven and eight separate.
So I have a comment. So we don't liaise with a lot of groups, which is fine. But if something big happens at the Board of Health, which is quite possible, you know, they do something regarding that affects our school children and or any other committee or group, what would be the protocol? We would notify the chairs and.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great.
There's actually something, I was actually going to ask Lori this. So did anyone read the news about the mercury poisoning? Or the mercury spill in Concord? So, okay, so I read this today. I have no idea what happened. The fire department is involved. And my first thought was exactly this, like, how is this going to affect our schools? Like, are we not supposed to drink water? I actually didn't put water in here. I put the seltzer in here. So I was like, wait a minute, I don't really understand what's happening, right? So I, I think if it was something of that magnitude, that it would be Board of Health related, Lori would be getting noticed from the staff at the town anyway, right? Like if it was something of that magnitude.
Something, so it's a situation where we need to advocate or, you know, something that really, they're, they're voting on a controversial, when they were doing the vaping ban, right? We really lobbied and tried to be sure that they voted, but they were getting a lot of pushback from business, local business. That's just one example.
Yeah.
But since, you know, these committees are on them active again, I just.
Yeah, I, I, I.
Just, I don't know how to express it.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I, if I might.
Yeah.
Add on, it's a different kind of example. But I, I look at this one and I'm kind of cautious about it because anytime we're trying to reduce information and communication, we do it at our potential peril, I think. It's hard to know what's going to be relevant to students and families in, in the moment.
I also think too, that we're not meant to be the town crier either. And I think, and I think though, if you look back at our meetings over the last few years, there were, there was a lot of that going on. So I think to your, I like your point. It, we could maybe refine it to say the business of the school committee or the, or the school community. Would that like broaden it enough?
Let me give you my example from today. I liaise with the Sister City Committee, but that's not an official liaise position. Nonetheless, I bring the information to the chairs. But I don't know where, where, how it goes anywhere from there. So. Well, if I, as I read this, I can't speak to it. That's what this tells me is I can't speak to it, even though.
What would be your, be your objective in speaking?
Even though I'm closest to it. What is my objective? My objective is that the school committee knows what's going on relative to activities beyond this room that might impact students and families in Concord and Carlisle and Boston. I mean, if we can talk about mercury here, we should be able to talk about other things. We are the town crier. You know, I think we've kind of debunked the idea that we're not the town crier. We are the town crier sometimes.
Since this isn't written on concrete, I'm willing to try it. And if it's too repressive.
Scriptive or, yeah.
And I know I can make a comment.
Yeah, and I think. And maybe that could be.
Maybe we just have flexibility, you know, like have a little bit of flexibility.
The chairs can use some caution.
Yeah. And again, maybe again, maybe it doesn't work.
Liaisons will limit reporting activity or news from groups.
I wish I was on this.
I guess, let, let me just post something else. So we've, we've tried to, because, you know, we could go through every committee that we liaise with. In some ways, there's something pertinent to the schools or sometimes there's not. So, you know, I'll give my example. So I've been with the DEI Commission all summer and they meet. They meet twice a month. So there are a lot of meetings that happen. Sometimes it's not relevant to the business of the committee necessarily, like it's important information. But do I come to school committee every single time and discuss what happened at their meeting? I think we're, we're just trying to avoid reporting on every single meeting, right? So I think we need to have.
We didn't nail it. We can, let's reiterate it.
I think we need to fix it a little bit, even like maybe once a month, we do oral reporting of, you know, what, anything happened, anybody, everything to say. And it can be flexible. It can be, you know, if you have nothing to say, then there's nothing to say. But I kind of think that that period of our meeting, I, I think was taking about 20 minutes, no matter what. And I think that we're just striving to really run efficient meetings. Because all of these things have happened in the public. Every single meeting that we liaise with has actually happened in the public. So let's just try and be aware of how we can make it as efficient as possible. And if it's something super important, then notify the chairs and we'll, we'll report on it.
So what I'll do in the interim is synthesize all this feedback and you know, if it's okay, I'll try and rework these to make them inclusive of all that feedback in a little bit more broader in scope while noting that we all understand what the intention is, which is to take, take, as Tracy pointed out, this 20 to 30 minute section of our meetings and reduce it. Because again, even when we think it's important, it is to Tracy's point, if it's happening in other meetings that are also public, it's largely duplicative. So I think that's, but when it's important, it's important. So just to be, I think, you know, just for all of us to be more mindful.
I trust my colleagues to know what's important. As to number seven, the examples you gave were all echoing formal recognitions that had been made prior. I think this school committee could well hear from some group that had some kind of effort or achievement that hadn't had a formal award prior that then got echoed here. Because I think. You know, they, you have to win a prize somewhere else to get a prize here.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
I like that too.
Actually, this reads.
I loved like the, the science presentation that came in or we had toys one year that came, like I do love hearing about some of those other things. There's not necessarily an award, but it's like a great program.
Trust the administration.
I do think there's a little bit of definition among the committee and us to have because we've, when we put the invites out, I don't think we're totally, and I look at Kristen because I delegated to her this job. I don't think we're completely clear what we're asking.
Right. No, we haven't been and that's on us.
And I feel like there were a couple of times I got feedback that you were disappointed in what they brought and I have to feel responsible for that because.
And this is us trying to address.
Yeah, so let's just.
Further refining and defining what we're all seeking to learn about the school community. And so, but to your point, Court, I like that, making it, and maybe, maybe you can work on some language. Because you've been thinking about it too. So, um, all right, any.
I also think it's like the expectations of us, like when they're coming in as a recognition, know that we're just here to enjoy the show, so to speak.
Yeah.
And.
We tell them five minutes.
And we tell them, you have five minutes and we're here to just really enjoy it. A couple of questions and, you know, it's a little bit.
And Tracy, that's our town crier role. We're amplifying those messages.
Yeah. And that's what we sought to do last year, but I think there was a mixed, you know, I, because everyone sort of thinks through the chairs, there was a mixed bag on how that rolled out.
I, I think it's like part of, one of my like favorite parts of it. Oh, I love it. Love it.
Very student centered.
Yeah.
Yes.
Answer that question of what message was given to, it was mostly department chairs at the high school. We alternated that in CPS was what internal work have you accomplished? That, that we might not know about. So.
Yes.
If we're, like, if we were to present this year, the social studies department at the high school has done a total revamping of the civics project. They've worked on it all summer. They'll put it into place this year. So.
That'd be a good record.
Yeah. Is that an example? Like. Because everybody has to do a civic project, but.
It's not.
It's somewhere else. But I, I think it's an example of like, how do you know about those things?
Right.
For me, it was always, let me give, let us give you a little snippet of what's going on versus a report, which is obviously much more thorough and depth. And we don't think we were all on the same page.
We weren't. And I, and it's, and so what, you know, again, that's why I feel like these conversations are super helpful because we, if we don't talk about it, and you know, we all know we can't talk about it like over lunch. You know, we, we're not, we're not going to get better. And like, I am so interested in getting better. So.
To Court's point, I want to be sure we're highlighting kids and not just.
Yes.
Homework.
Well, right. Or like, yeah, I mean, right. So I think there are ways. Or my homework will be, let me try to make these.
I want to think, you know, I, 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 I don't know if I can express this correctly, but you know, I, I always think it's wonderful when kids come into this room and they're in awe of us.
Of course you do.
We're just a school committee.
You forget what a big deal it is for when we invite them. It is a recognition to them, no matter what, that they're.
The idea that people get to take a bow, that they.
Absolutely.
Take and get an applause that they wouldn't otherwise get and do it in public session. I think we all have to be mindful. It's a huge deal.
It's a huge honor. It's a huge honor.
It's humbling to us because it's just us.
Yeah.
You know?
No, this is conversation.
The yard's watching.
Yeah, right. All right.
That's really great start to that comment.
Yeah. So this is again, this is great. So expect week after, this weekly time, I will, how about I do, make you all promise, I get like some sort of rework of these out to you guys by, for.
This is Friday.
Friday.
Um, Thursday, whenever, Thursday, Friday, so that you guys can marinate over them over the weekend. And then if, you know, and then we can do much more like work on it. And if you have suggestions, edit them in your own time and then bring them here to, to talk. So I'll take a first pass at tweaking them and bettering them. And then we can make it just a pile on and hopefully we can still vote on them next week.
Are we trying to vote? Yeah.
Yeah.
We can get better in a week. That's the call. Everyone cool? Any more comments?
It's a question for number nine. I don't think there was, it just kind of ended. Where is it? Where is it? Question number nine or item number nine?
Erin, can you share that one more time? Sorry.
I'm just not sure what you thought was for.
I couldn't find it to read it.
Oh, continue on to the next.
Oh, yeah, yes. Thank you. That was just a scrolling issue, Sharon. Okay, yeah. So it kept going. Alrighty. So next, I'm just closing tabs. Yeah, go ahead. Closing tabs. Okay, closing tabs. All right, what's next? Closing that tab.
So.
Okay, goal setting. Okay. So last year, I'll just set the stage. Remember, we did like a much more like collaborative exercise, which was wonderful, but it took us three months to do it. So what I sought to do this year was to take some of that, what we did, which was, you know, collaborative and, and all that, and then return a little bit to our previous practice, which for Sharon and Carrie, you guys weren't here, which would, which was, the previous practice would be, everybody would sort of send to the chairs. These are my ideas of things I want to highlight in the year, which we kind of did with these report requests, right? And then from there, the chair would come to this meeting with sort of some proposed goals in mind. So we're, we're doing like a little bit of both. So we did last year, which was this big sort of collaborative thing. This I think is still pretty collaborative, but I did this year come with, I think it was four, three. I don't remember how many.
Four.
Four, four, which was the same that we did last year, goals for our consideration. I sent you guys that document. And then what I did, because they, we want them to be SMART goals. We want them to show, we want to be able to demonstrate how we are seeking to achieve those goals. So the way I wrote, the way I wrote them and why I wrote them was I aggregated the reports that we were looking to.
It's all in the, um, it's in the overview. It's all linked in the agenda.
I know, but, okay.
So this, so, so we will get better at the packet. We're just trying to manage lots of links and all that, and they can't always exist in two places. So I'll make sure that anything that was in the overview.
But I shared this with all of you guys, so you should be able to open it and then find where it is. This was shared with you today. So you can, if you go into your email, Cynthia, you'll see it. Okay. So I suppose I can just read through them and same thing. We could just kind of talk about them one, like one by one, talk about the language that we're using, all of that. The joint school committees will evaluate student success through the lens of curriculum and instruction, specifically in literacy and math, to ensure that our investments yield the student achievement and success articulated in the five year strategic plan. That was born out of the fact that we had sort of six report requests or, you know, requests for data that we wanted to see around literacy, special education. You know, we got, sometimes we've got real specific middle school math. Sometimes we got less specific K eight math. But there was definitely an emergent theme of, you know, look, you know, how are we, how are students interacting with the curriculum? Are we making the right investments? You know, that sort of, it sort of intersects with our purview and the budget. So that was my first pass if people want to sort of discuss that.
I, I would offer up these, the first two I'm looking at are high level enough so that I don't have much to offer. I would be more content with the terminology, district commitments rather than our investments. Investment speaks to dollars only in the minds of some readers. And our, who's the our, might as well say it's us, us, the district. So that people know that we're representing the districts at large. So it's minor wordsmithing.
Yeah, no, no. That's what we're into.
I mean, I know, I know it's about investments, but there's many.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with your feeling.
On the, it's just from a process question. Are we going to go through each of these reports and turn them into one report?
How are you? I don't think we can. So, so, because I think there's a lot of diversity in those. So what I, what I'm hoping is if, if we can sort of, I, I agree to the spirit of the goals, what we could then do would be to some of these, speaking of collapsing, I think can be collapsed into like a single report request.
Yeah.
So what we would do, and I didn't get any feedback, but we can get this feedback maybe next week. If I'd lay, I'd invite everybody to look through the reports. And if you felt that there was something that could be added to it. I don't know if you all, embarrassingly enough, have editing ability to do this, but like if you put like a suggestion on them, I'd like to add this question. What? a suggestion on them, I'd like to add this question. What?
I think we can comment.
I think you can comment.
Comment, but we can't.
But you can't like erase or whatever. Yeah, yeah. So, right, so if you can comment, God willing, or I can, if you can't.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure you can comment.
Oh, right, okay, right. So no, you're right, you can't, you can't. We had to restrict that, sorry, because of open meeting law. You're right, you can't, and we.
Send you an email.
Yes, and then I can aggregate them and send them out. So, and then next week, because, so, I think the good news is, I think that these.
I know.
This data is, and these questions are so specific, and we've talked so much about, um, helping the administration really understand exactly what we want, not just topics that we want to hear about, but like, what about those topics? You know, traditionally, we've said, oh, we want to learn about student mental health. Well, gosh, can you imagine being Kristen? Like, what, what do they really want to see? So this is our opportunity, um, to just be explicit and tell her, look, this is what we want to see. So I would invite everybody to go through those reports one by one, if you have suggestions, and again, no one missed anything, these were our best efforts. So, you know, say like, report number four in literacy, great start, um, can we add these three questions? And, um, and then what we will then be able to do from here, and again, and, and so, and I will do the work of suggesting some that might be collapsed, and you can see, actually, a lot of the questions are in fact.
And can I also ask that if you're sending Alexa the feedback, if you send it in document form versus an email, then we can add it, so then everybody.
Yeah.
Can see everything, you know, because all the reports are there, and just remove people's names, or, because.
Because they're, everything's sort of anonymous.
So, everything's kind of anonymous as it is, so that then we'll just have a record of that to just add to this. And not within the context of the email, if that's okay.
If, if I might, um, Lori, I want to direct this one to you, if I may, and I think, I think you'll understand it. I, I know you will. This effort on our part to be so explicit about what we need, I would hope, and I would trust, doesn't preclude for you from deciding what we need to know, when we need to know it. I don't want to set you up for, you didn't ask, so now you don't know.
Appreciate that.
So if you carry this on too far.
Yeah.
I'm speaking to the chairs now, um, you're really gonna hamstring the admin who's gonna then hamstring us, and it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be an ugly situation.
I think we'll promise you as a, as a professional team, we're gonna say to you, oh, that's great, but you won't have the whole story unless we also bring you.
We've got to trust you to do that.
Thank you.
You're not checking these boxes.
No.
Keeping us informed, and there's a difference.
Yeah, and I think, but what I think, I think what has happened historically that we're trying to prevent and is we do, what we don't, we can, they can always add, but we're saying, this is, this is the data that we believe is important for us to do our jobs, and certainly, to your point, you can add, and guess what? I'm quite certain that we're gonna build this, you know, schedule document that slots these reports into different times throughout the year. And I, you know, if I know the, the ebb and flow of the school committee, you're gonna come to us and say, we're gonna need to present to you on X, Y, Z thing, or, you know, to Kristen's point, hey, the civics, you didn't know this, but the whole civics curriculum's been revamped, we're gonna tell you about it, and it's gonna happen in February. So there's always room for that, but this is just our ability to create, um, explicit requests, so that, I mean, really, the truth is, I mean, again, like, and, and I'll just expose this, so that we don't complain about like, oh, we're not getting the data that we want. This, this, you know, we're, this is our, this is our vehicle to get the data that we want.
I think you just add at the end the last question that says, what are we missing?
Yeah, right.
Lori, I think you hear me.
I do, absolutely.
Our, uh, desire to be so explicit doesn't mean that, uh, you can't be, uh, quite, quite forthcoming about, uh, what we need to know, when we need to know it.
No, in fact, that's my job.
Doesn't give you a pass.
I hear it loud and clear. Just why I just said that's my job.
That's my job.
Because, I mean, your goals have a lot of MTSS. I don't see that here.
Right.
You know, so I would expect you to talk to us.
To say, uh, we need to bring you them.
Um, the other thing is, uh, we have a statewide, we're gonna have a new house curriculum in, not.
What'd you say?
You know, help, help curriculums. Which hasn't been revised in 20 years, from what I understand. So for the public to understand, that's gonna be really great, because we've been kind of winging it, as most districts, trying to catch up when things have changed a little bit in 20 years. So, you know, that's just another thing that I think that we'd want to talk about at the.
Absolutely.
Because it would be really exciting, I think, for, yeah, all, all kinds.
I think also tradition, Lori, you do do that. You bring us, you know, we've all, almost, you know, a, a plurality of us have been chairs. That is exactly what you do in those chairs meetings. I think, you know, I propose we discuss this, and this certainly, to your point, Court, doesn't preclude that. We would still expect you to be bringing us things, but it is our responsibility to be, to bring you what, you know, we believe is important. So, yeah, it's now a perfect marriage.
Can I, can I make an edit in the first goal? So you have specifically in literacy and math, and like, already tonight, we've heard about social studies, you've heard about health, like, I don't want to let go of any of those other curriculum areas. I know.
I agree.
But I think that it, it is also gonna be some of your judgment, if you have something to bring to us on science, math, health, you know, music, whatever it is, then you have the flexibility to do that. So some of us are looking for specific things on literacy and math, but know that we'd like to hear about everything.
About that. Yep.
And that's a rather necessary message to our educators, that student success doesn't mean literacy and math, right, full stop.
So wait, so rather than we just put these on, this is live, like, you can see me, right? Do we all agree that with that, let's remove that?
Yeah, remove it.
And then let's, um, and let's also, I think I'm very comfortable, I don't want to, to, um.
Court suggestion.
Suggestion.
I agree.
Just one more thing. You, because you say yield the student achievement and success, I think you might want to change that to have the addition of yield student achievement and growth, because it's not achievement, because we, we report on it anyway, but achievement is how many kids met the benchmark.
Right.
Growth is, how, how much value added do kids have year to year? So we track a group of kids as they're in kindergarten through fifth grade through eighth grade, and you can see the value that a Concord education gives.
Yes, yeah.
Speaks to the way you think, which is what we need to know. Yeah, good, yeah, I like that.
I like it. That's fine. I, I already added it.
So we, we, I think we tend to hyper-focus on achievement, because that's an M A S C thing.
Yeah.
Student achievement, student achievement. It means all these things. It doesn't just mean As and Bs, it means, you know, to your point, progress, growth, whatever. So further articulating that, I think is still in line with what they're asking us to do, and something we all agree with.
So I have a comment. We have three core functions, right? Recorded by law.
Yeah.
Budget, policy, evaluation superintendent. Either we make explicit goals, we own the budget, right? We, it's proposed to us. We don't just evaluate it. We do a little bit more than I hope.
Can we get there, when we get there to the goal?
Oh, I thought you were just finishing and giving us a free throw.
Oh, no, 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 it's just, I'm going to go off to goal one.
Goal one.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get there. Um, okay, sorry, but yeah, we'll get there. Uh.
We weren't explicit in that, sorry.
Sorry. Sorry. Okay, goal two, the joint school committees will evaluate areas of DEIB to ensure that our investments, okay, we want, we want to change that to district commitments, Court, or off the bat.
Thank you.
District commitments demonstrate progress against our shared, oh, Christ, now we got commitmented twice. Okay, our district commitments demonstrate progress against our shared goals.
Goals and objectives.
Goals and objectives for an.
Goals for an equitable, inclusive, and anti-racist future in Concord and Carlisle schools. And then you'll see, you know, we did have interest in explicit data around this as well. Any thoughts?
I don't know what the word shared adds to this, because they're, they're not even goals if they're not shared, but it's fine.
This, I, I, to be honest, I lifted this from last year, and I, I reworked it, so, um.
Uh, we're being critical, I know.
You know, it's, that's what we're supposed to do. The joint school committees will evaluate areas of DEIB to ensure that our district commitments demonstrate progress.
Toward.
Yeah, I'd say toward.
Yes, thank you.
Don't we have a, don't we have a plan of some kind? Don't, do we have a?
Toward the DEIBs. Okay. We could say, now that we do have a strategic plan, so last year we didn't, so we use the language of shared goals for an equitable, inclusive, and anti-racist future. So could we say demonstrate progress towards our goals, to, to the goals articulated in the strategic plan? Is that?
I kind of like it broader, um, because I do think that we're gonna have Andrew come and report to us about, um, the strategic plan, I don't know, I.
Yeah, I want to follow that, Tracy, and say, I don't want this, the wording here to obligate us to go parse that.
Right, to go in that plan and like check.
Yeah, yeah.
I kind of like the broad, right?
No, 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 and I don't think we do. This was, so, this last section here is.
Demonstrate progress toward an equitable, inclusive, and anti-racist.
Great.
You know, maybe drop a trunk out and still takes you there.
Great, perfect.
Economy of words.
I like being terse. Uh, okay, good, everyone like it?
Yep.
Okay, marvelous. Okay, uh, the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee will recommence efforts to complete the CCHS campus, capitalizing on the recommendations of the CCHS Campus Advisory Committee.
And before, Carrie Patel, if you want to say anything, I've lost you on the Zoom screen, so just unmute yourself and interrupt us.
I'm still here, and I will.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm not, uh, prepared to just vote to.
We're not voting on anything tonight.
I, I understand that. I'm just giving you my forecast, as I'm not ready to vote to wholesale complete a list, uh, produced by that committee until we thoroughly study it, because it's got a lot of implications, budget being, uh, uh, among those implications. So I, I think we've got to slow down on this one. Uh, this is.
We could say towards.
You say.
Towards completion.
Or towards.
Otherwise, we're just declaring that we're gonna, we're gonna work somebody else's list that was done a good number of years ago.
Well, I think it's, she, it's saying, I have similar, I had similar hesitations about this one, only because does it rise to a, like a standalone goal, or is it part of a bigger initiative? But I think if we, if it says recommence efforts toward, I don't think that that's saying, I don't think that, without saying we're taking your to-do list and, and Carrie.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, could we just end it after campus, the completion, to recommence efforts towards completion of CCHS campus, and again, leave it broad? Yeah, because knowing that we're gonna study the prior work that's been done, we're gonna have a lot of discussion about it, and.
I think it's worth calling out that committee.
Let me offer up, the CCHS campus is never going to be completed.
Right, that's what, yeah, towards, I think is important.
He's working on campuses, so, so why don't we, uh, toward, uh, you know, let's, let's give ourselves a little running room here, toward what? Toward, toward improvements?
Okay.
Something?
Yeah.
There is no, there is no endpoint to, uh.
Yeah, I like that.
Of keep, uh, development of, of school properties. Nice if there was.
Yep. All right, I like that. I like all this live editing.
I, I do wonder, I mean, maybe this doesn't go in the goal, like, do we do we mention, like, studying the economic impact? Because I think that is the big question. This, this sounds very expensive.
Well, of course we would.
Yeah, but I think that's implied in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
It goes back to my comment, that's our job.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Everything needs to be looked at.
Studied. Yeah, yeah.
We appreciate why you named it, though.
Uh, all right, we good?
Yep.
All right. All right. Uh, the joint school committees will evaluate the Concord and Carlisle Regional School budgets with specific emphasis on balancing fiscal prudence while maintaining a minimum of level service. Um, again, there was a budget report, right, there was a report request there, and then Cynthia, you had, there was like a, a, a list of things, um, so I added those under there, too.
I would say we'll create.
Yeah, we don't. Evaluate.
Create, we'll deliver, we'll provide.
It, it's more than an opinion that we provide. We actually are, are allowed to have some kind of influence on budgets, in fact, expected to.
Is it? But isn't this getting into the territory of like, that is our actual job responsibility versus our goal? Because our, what we were talking.
My thought, yeah.
Last year was like, really trying to separate out those two things. I think.
I agree with you 99% of, of the way. I think this year, with the advent of our budget workshops, I, I thought even though you're exactly right, this is just one of our responsibilities, this isn't necessarily all that different, um, or something unique, or something where, but, but what we did talk about last year was part of what our goals allowed us to do was to sort of signal to the community, if you will, what our, like, what our priorities are. It elevated some strategic priorities over others, right? We're always looking at academics, but last year, we were talking about sort of mental health and wellbeing and DEIB. We didn't, like, there wasn't an explicit, like, academic goal. Of course, we're doing that, but we just wanted to say, you know, this year, these two things are a little bit over and above everything else. These are our strategic priorities. I think this year, there is consensus among us that the budget is a little bit more elevated this year. It's always what we do, but this year, and maybe this will become a thing we always do, but this year, we're gonna give it a little more depth, a little more time, and it does signal to the community, we always do the budget, but this year, it's a little bit, a little bit more.
I, I mean, I think you're, yeah, with specific emphasis on balancing fiscal, um, prudence, while, I think that you meant while.
While and not with.
Yeah. Maintain a minimum of level service.
Oh, whoops.
Uh, I've spent a few more years on these budgets than some others. Um, I don't think our emphasis is new. In fact, I've lived through years and decades where budgetary pressures in this district were much more profound and, and, uh, concerning to people, um, than they are now. So, you know, maybe in the moment, this feels like a big lift, but you know what, folks, it's, get used to it, it's always gonna be a big lift. Uh, it's, it's the nature of it, it really is. When do we get an override, you know, um, or, or, uh, an organized group that has a hard time with our investments, you know, they come and go in this town, in this district, and they will again, and that's, that's okay.
Yep.
It's okay, but, um, so I, I, I'm, I'm not sure I agree that, uh, we're in unusual times in that regard. We're in unusual times in many ways, but, uh, the fiscal pressures, the fiscal demands on us, uh, uh, are always gonna be, be front and center, I think.
Yep, but we can certainly nix this as a goal, and just, to Carrie's point, assume that it's just part of our responsibility.
Well, or you add, put the de facto one in, which is, we're gonna, uh, um, uh, work with the administration to develop, and then the school committee is going to propose a responsible budget to town meetings.
But that, yeah, that sort of defeats the purpose.
It's just a declaration of fact. If you want to talk fact, just say it.
So then, do we, do we have consensus that we want to just strike it all together then?
I propose a substitute. So, um, I think the Concord Public School Committee needs to have a goal to, uh, complete the evaluation of the four buildings, our three elementary schools and the Ripley Building.
Facilities.
Facilities.
Facility study. So an additional goal?
Yeah. Well, 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 we would.
We're committing to a study of the.
Right.
You know, I think, in light of the tremendous investment that the town has made in the Concord Middle School, we need to redouble our efforts to really, uh, be sure that we properly maintain the three elementary schools, for sure.
So, wait, wouldn't this go to goal number three? Isn't that the same?
No.
No, because three is the region, so, but maybe we.
Oh, we do a whole, we make, we put three as a, as a.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, as a double goal.
You make a good point, because.
You know me, I'm a separated.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
What you described is not a perennial responsibility.
No. Right.
Therefore deserving of a call out here.
Yep.
But I think that goes with number, goal three, like, three A is region, three B is DPS.
I like separating them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
However you want to format it, but the, but I don't.
That is not a goal for our Carlisle members.
No.
Um, hold on, actual size. So, but to that end, Bob, the facility study that you were going to sort of launch this year, which I think is kind of what we're talking about putting into like a goal.
Yes.
Does that, does that include stuff at CCHS? I thought you, no?
No.
Okay.
No, not at all.
We added Ripley.
Ripley.
Okay, great.
I, I, I don't know that you'd get as much benefit out of.
I, I don't know that you'd get as much benefit out of CCHS based on its life being ten years old.
Right.
We're approaching a point where the elementary schools are always twenty twenty.
Yeah.
So. You know, we, CCHS will have some, some issues pop up, but.
The study is a CPS number.
Yeah, and when we talked about it here, the request was made that I include Ripley. So we were thinking to include Ripley. We have a kind of a, we have a model from my last district. We'll get that moving pretty quickly. And, yeah, and just a, a comment, I mean, both of those relate to stewardship of our physical resources, like they're, they're the same goal, they're just different districts.
Yeah.
So, so it would be, the, the goal of the facility study would be to create a, would it be a five year strategic plan, ten year, long range? What are we calling it?
I think it's current conditions.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Could create a plan based on that.
I'm going to ask for two things and ask for, there's a categorization that's typical for these types of assessments.
So the Concord School Committee will commence a comprehensive facility study of the three elementary schools and the Ripley Building with the intention of create, using this data. Using just the data to create a capital plan?
Yeah, updated capital plan, because you've had one.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're just going to have good information to inform it.
You don't need using the data, too.
I like that.
Yeah, I might be going to ask for ten years. Just.
Carrie's suggestion is remove using the data.
Remove what?
Using the data. I think you missed that. Carrie's suggestion.
We can debate five and ten.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Getting a ten year plan means you're going to change it.
Developing, of developing and updated.
It's the we commence our CCHS effort.
Right, yeah.
In five minutes, we're going to have to push some things out, so.
I like that.
Come ten.
Okay. And then, so then, to Court's point, goal four just becomes a reiteration of our roles and responsibilities. So is there consensus to nix it?
Well, otherwise we have to think about how we've left out the other major responsibilities.
I think we can nix it.
Well, I think you can state it at the top saying our core responsibilities as a committee are to oversee.
Yeah, we, yeah, we have that document.
In addition.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
These are called out as.
These are different, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's chuck it.
Yeah, yeah.
So then you'll notice there were some report requests, well, so now budget, report request eleven, which is specifically about the budget. And report request twelve, I'll just put these up. And twelve didn't neatly fit into any categories. But I still think depending on, you know, what we think, I still think, you know, they're potentially ones we can fit into our sort of skeleton.
Well, I, I'm going to try to quote our superintendent here and say, I, I think she would tell us, as would Kristen, that if we don't address these, we're not addressing teaching and learning needs. So she is going to wrap these. Are, am I right, Lori? You are going to, these are going to wrap very nicely into.
Yes, we need, we need to address those for kids to be.
Admission to a classroom.
Right. So, so they're still worthy, we'll still, to your point, to your point, make them actionable. So this is good. We did this in real time.
I, I do, I would love to set to the, sorry. Report number twelve on anxiety and depression. I would love to set a goal around that. And I don't think it has to be specific to anxiety and depression, but. Yeah, yeah. And then I think number.
You want to write it?
Twelve. Live or can I?
You can write it and then send it to me and then I'll send it to everybody.
Does, I mean, as long as.
Does everyone agree that that's something that they actually take that back? Well.
Let me pick up on it and maybe, I, I don't know, Lori, whether you want Kristen to speak to it, but I'm reminded that I think it was in June that you were, you were quite declarative with us. You said this is the school committee's number one goal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And student wellness, mental health, wellness, wellbeing. And, and I remember looking at the minutes thinking, wait, did she tell us that's our goal? Is she telling us what our number one is? And the answer was, yes. Yeah, she did. So, and I accept that, you know, I accept that. So, you know, to, to follow on what you're saying, I think we just deserve some time and attention. We're going to get it from you anyway, because everybody in the ranks is focusing on this. But the how, I'm not sure. And how it lands here, I'm not sure. But I'm not worried about you.
Right.
Bringing this to us routinely with good news, bad news. Who knows?
It is for sure, the foundation on which everything else rests right now. There's no question.
So can we reorder these and make that goal number one? And will you write a draft of the goal that we can do the same thing with and be ready to vote on it next week? Do you think we could do that, like wordsmith it? Like if you send it, we'll send it out to everybody before the meeting. And let's get ready to wordsmith it live, just like we did this, and be ready to vote on them next week.
I, I'm fine with that, but I don't want to force it if we need another five minutes. Too important. I think we can. But I don't think it's a have to.
Yeah, and if we don't, we'll just.
It's not going to take months either.
Exactly.
No, that's all I'm trying to prevent. And actually, like, there's no, like, school committee self evaluation, but this is something I actually think we're good at. Like, I think, I, I have confidence that we'll be able to do it next week. And to your point, if we don't, we don't, but that's the goal. No pun intended. And yeah, like I said, I think we're actually good at this. So. Great.
Okay, that's great.
Okay, and then I have to write down my to do. So I think that there's some ability to collapse these reports. Is that something? Here's like, I guess, honest.
Can we just plug them into our?
Or, or, and is it something that you guys care about seeing? Or I, I'm just going to do it and bring it to you guys and we'll just look at them. Great.
May we give you some feedback?
You may. Do you want to do that live here? Or do you want to do it?
Whatever you want. They're just seeing them. I just, they're just seeing them live here right now. So let us talk and then give us some.
Yeah, I love that.
Okay, so everyone will give feedback. So our committee's homework will be to, when I get the collapsed reports out to you Thursday, please don't hate me if it's Friday. You know, offer some feedback and I will be getting concurrent feedback from you all. Okay, great. And then we'll retalk about them. And so the reports, getting the reports to a perfect place, I don't think is necessary to, to ratify or vote on our goals. I just gave us this worksheet so I could demonstrate to you all why I thought these were good goals. I think these were, the, the data that we're seeking sort of substantiated these goals. So I don't think, so they, so we can still, I think, vote on the goals next week, even if the report requests continue to need some tweaking. Does that make sense to everybody?
I like to see nodding, eye contact.
And if anything is missing, then just, yeah, I know, if anything is missing from the report requests, if you could just pass along those documents, that would be great.
Yep. All right, moving on.
Finally, nice work. Thank you so much. All right, budget and policy workshop schedule. I'm going to pass this to Carrie and Sharon. So Carrie, I did send Erin, oh, Erin, can I just say how wonderful Erin is? Because I actually sent this to her live in the meeting and she magically has it appear. So I'll turn this to Carrie first and Sharon on budget and policy.
Great. Okay, so I had a conversation with Alexa and Lori to talk about this newly formed budget workshop. Budget workshops. And I think that what, and this is all up for discussion, so I'm going to sort of present what we discussed, which is minimal at this point. And then feedback is very, very welcome. So we talked about these being a primarily focusing initially on the first, you know, five months of the year is that's the writing of the budget period. So we talked about it as an opportunity for the committee to give us live updates on what's changing for us to give feedback, sorry, for the administration to give updates on the budget for us to provide feedback. And then in it, we sort of tried to marry our meetings with what we expect or are requesting of the FinCom meetings, so that we're all kind of communicating in a, in a good sequence. So the schedule we outlined is I'm actually going to look at my notes.
And actually, before you go on, I should also say that when it says FinCom, this is Concord FinCom.
Yes.
I need to be in touch with the Carlisle FinCom, so Carrie and Carrie's our, Patel is our rep for Carlisle, so, but that usually happens later than this timeline. And so we'll, we'll be adding to that with the Carlisle piece.
Okay. And then the other thing is, because both budgets are obviously very separate. With these workshops, we're anticipating that there are ninety minute workshops. They would be from five to six thirty. The first hour would be focused on CPS and the second half hour would be focused on the region. So so for the, the folks who are in both, we would be meeting from five to six thirty. Sharon and Carrie Patel, you could come just from six to six thirty. They're all on days that we are already meeting for school committee or evenings, I should say. And then they were trying, what we, what we purposefully did was schedule workshops ahead of joint FinCom meetings, which Alexa was going to reach out to Parrishar to.
I still have not worked, have received word if these are dates work for them. So, well, these are what we think might be.
This is what we're hoping. This is our ideal kind of layout, but they're, they're not confirmed. So, yeah, so October twenty fourth, the twenty sixth, November seventh, November sixteenth, and then Dr. Hunter and Bob would present the the first presentation of the full budget on the twenty first.
At the workshops.
No, that would be at the school committee meeting. Yeah.
The first of the full budget. Did I not read something that said in October, we'd receive some something that was more high level?
That's some of what the discussion has been, is trying to look at what the timeline, effective timeline would be. So the suggestion we had was to bring more information in October as the foundational piece and then bring the whole thing later in November.
And just like our school committee reports, if we could get the forty eight hours to work on things before we walk into the room.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're really disabled, I think, if I am.
Yeah.
If, if I'm denied the information prior. I would ask that we speak tonight to the the quote unquote budget book, something more than a spreadsheet that would be shared with the people in the community who are interested, notably FinCom and anybody who voted for same at, at town meeting. Can we build that into our calendar, please?
And we've been in discussions, the chairs have been in discussions with Lori and Bob, there will be a budget book this year, but they're working on kind of the format and figuring what the best format for that is. Because I think we did hear from FinCom that some of the prior budget books, some of it is useful, but not necessarily that whole budget book. So it will have the substance of what needs to go into a budget book. So there is a commitment to do a budget book for this year.
Does the school committee get to participate in its budget book development?
Well, I think, well, I would think that some of these budget workshops, we'd have ample time to now get feedback on that.
Okay, because ultimately it's got our fingerprints on it. So I'd like to this school can be, school committee to be part of that process.
Can you help me understand like what that would look like?
It would look like this committee working with the administration on the way information will be presented to the community about our recommended budget.
The way in which we present.
I'd like to be more than reactive and just provide opinions about Lori or Bob's work.
Budget workshop.
Well, and I guess, you know.
Want to do it before that session, like.
I think a school committee, I think a school committee has a role that goes beyond simply commenting on budget matters.
I guess, you know, the only thing, you know, when I hear you say it's our budget book, the budget book was always done by the business office, right? So they're creating it. We are looking at it. And, you know, it's not really our budget book, you know, so I do want to give them some room to create the budget book.
And what had, what I am going to ask, and I don't really have strong feelings on the outcome necessarily, but the labor intensive way we were operating can't be what we go back to. Way too consuming for too many people in this office. So I hope that can just be factored.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, the other thing I'm just going to say publicly, too, is, is we still have some hiring to do in the business office, and I just want to be cognizant of that. And just so the committee's aware of that, and we have some people out right now. So it is going to happen. There's been a commitment to develop a budget book. But, you know, I do think that we're going to look towards, you know, Bob and his team to create that for us.
I, I wasn't suggesting the school committee would produce the book. I was trying to suggest that the school committee's role includes participation in deciding what this community sees vis a vis a budget. Simple as that.
Yeah.
Simple as that.
Could I ask, like, if there's suggestions that maybe the chairs gather ideas? Because if I'm in October getting suggestions for the first time. It's going to be hard for me to, so by October, I can, I can respond and say, well, this is something we just, it's slicing data a different way, or
Yeah.
Say this is really a lot of work that we might not, might take us some time to develop, but having some ideas sent well in advance of the first, or the budget workshop that we talk about it will help me prepare. And then I can bring some suggestions as well. There's some things that I didn't see in the previous budget books, which are a little bit more like our per pupil expenditures comparing to other districts, like there's, there's other things we can do. And I can, you know, I have other resources. I can look at some of the other districts. I don't necessarily think it's valuable to do a hundred and fifty page budget book like Lexington. But we can get a lot of good data. Some of it's pulling information we have in presentations and formatting it. One other piece that's a challenge is that our budget was not a static number throughout the process. So whenever our numbers change, there's like
Yeah.
Fifteen, how many, however many pieces of data we have, it could be affecting a lot of places. So kind of mindful of the balance of when we produce the budget book. There might be some things we can get that are pre-budget book, reflecting on last year's data. There might be others that it would be extra work to create it in October, then we potentially have modification and other modification.
Yeah.
So that there's a balance there.
And I think that's really good. And I think to your point about saying, you know, it might not need to be a hundred and fifty page budget book. I mean, I do think it's worth making sure this has been said in the public. You know, we have heard feedback from some members on the finance committee, but we've heard from others, like, I'm never going to read this thing. Why are you giving me this thing? This isn't useful. This isn't helpful. So I think there is no broad consensus about the right way to do the budget book. So I would appreciate you know, sort of getting your perspective, given that, you know, conflicting feedback about what you think is the right sort of way. And, and to your point, getting solicitation about earlier rather than later from the committee about some perspective about what we think might be valuable. And just sort of funneling that to you as soon as possible, so you can factor that in. So.
I mean, I have aspirational goals with this. It's, it's going to be iterative. We'll, we'll definitely make progress this year and work to get to a better place.
You know, not only do other districts have models that we might like or dislike, we have our own previous models to make it easier. And to your point, if you know what you want it to look like, then as you build the budget and know the formatting that you want this to ultimately appear in, it's going to help you, I think, not, not redo anything. While we're on the subject of budget, I'd like to turn to fiscal twenty four and ask if we could, or at least I could get a current copy of the, of the fiscal twenty four budget. Mine's a bit outdated at this point.
I believe I've loaded the line item budget to.
They're on the webpage.
The webpage.
Okay.
Districts. I'll double check.
And it's got a date on it. So, because to your point.
There, that's where I've gone.
If we don't date stamp them.
Yeah.
Budgets, budgets evolve. We know that better than most, yeah.
I think I labeled it, but we'll double check.
Very good, okay.
So just possibly, everybody, it sounds like maybe we'd be, do well to meet before October. And I have a question. We have a meeting with the FinCom or to provide the data on September twenty first. That's still true?
We've requested a date change. Parrishar is considering it. So no, that is not necessarily the date we're using.
Okay, I just request that we see the data before it goes to the FinCom.
Yeah, sure. If the data is.
We have a budget workshop to do that?
Yes, of course. If, if, if they don't grant our request to push it back to the way things had been previous.
That's why it's listed the way it is now. We requested to go in October after you get the budget. To their timeline. Yeah, we've asked to have them consider September a really hard month for us.
Yes, and Parrishar is very amenable to that and working on that with his committee. So we just don't have an update yet.
But to your point, we're, we're putting the pattern in that the budget workshops right before the.
Right before, right. So yes, if the FinCom, if, if FinCom wasn't avail, built, sorry, able to accommodate our request, then yes, the budget workshop would go to September.
Okay.
The first one, yeah.
And so that's a lot of information. So we definitely would need a, you know, that Friday to review it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, I just want to be clear, because it's, because they've asked for a lot of stuff.
Yeah, it's the typical.
Well, didn't they ask for multiple to do? Because we have contracts, don't they? Wants to put together five year projections with multiple. Well, didn't they ask for multiple to do because we have contracts, don't they? Wants to put together five year projections with multiple.
Yeah, that's what they've been asking for the last few years. And yeah, it is a lot. We're not denying you that.
So, okay. I just think it'll be useful to, I, I'm just trying to understand like, what's the budget workshop going to be?
I think it's just a deep dive on, it gives us an opportunity outside of the meetings that are already really long to do a deep dive on the budget. So it's just. A little bit deeper conversation about the, what, where we are with the budget, what the questions are.
Because that will probably, this twenty fourth thing will be consumed by just looking at the budget data request. That's all I'm saying. So maybe it would be good to have a kickoff budget workshop, just to see what the, what the processes are going to be this year, that kind of the thing instead of diving into this, but.
We can do that.
Plan the plan.
Right. Yeah. The policy is a little more clear.
So Carrie, you'll just get back to us if you have any updates and if not, we'll assume that this is the schedule thus far.
Okay.
And I'll, um, pick my girl Dee is on the. So well, I'll get, I'll get, I'll get to someone to see if they've, um, I don't know that they've met. So.
I don't think they've met.
They meet the, uh, FinCom?
Yeah, they, they meet.
Twenty fourth.
Yeah. So then we'll get an update.
Yeah. So they're, they're probably just waiting to do that in their meeting.
But it might be useful to meet earlier to discuss the guideline that they're going to set.
Okay. We believe that to our budget chair. Thank you, Carrie. Um, and onto policy, Sharon.
Uh, so far we have three dates scheduled. They're all on Tuesday at five P M. Uh, that's October tenth, December fifth, February sixth, and I have a commitment to meet with Dr. Hunter. And, um, Dorothy Presser to, um, and, uh, Carrie, just to see where we left off last year. And so we can continue from there and see which policies. We want to review.
Make a request that we, we have that discussion as a committee. You'll bring us a proposal or something like that and then we can discuss.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to, um, cell tower and campus security at CCHS. And I will say that our cell tower discussion will be next, uh, Tuesday. So we will have. Jason Bulger, Chris Carmody and Megan.
Yeah, I'm not sure if Chris is coming, uh, deputy town manager.
But her name is Megan. Um, they will, and we will have to you the presentation that they have. You'll get that, um, on Thursday and they did cancel their forum that was scheduled on August first. It will be rescheduled to September. So I will just reiterate again, there has been no movement on the school committee's, um, part on a self hour. Cell tower at the high school. We're just still investigating it with the town, very much working in collaboration with the town on this. And so I'm looking forward to hearing from them on that. Do you have anything else on the cell tower before I move on to?
No, I actually already have those slides. I'll send them to you.
Okay, great. And then our campus security updates, uh, we're going to hear from Dr. Hunter about our blue lights.
Yeah, really high level. We've, we've got one blue light in as a starting point and sort of. Looking at the pros and cons of how we put it in and some fine tuning. So then the rest will go in. Um, so that's all underway. Their. Good news is they're here. That was one of our bigger concerns. And then, um, the wifi. IT's really been working on the mesh wifi and, uh, pushing that out more extensively throughout the campus. So they've made a lot of progress. So we're. Actually pretty excited to get people back on campus and sort of see how these upgrades play out in real time with thousands of people there. But feels like we've made some progress on safety for sure, um, just because it will be more reliably available to get communication up. So.
All right.
More, more to come.
More to come. Any questions on that? Comments? Nope. We're good. Okay. And then we will go to our campus completion. So this is, you've had some information about this. We just. The background was given, um, Dr. Hunter gave it on June thirteenth, kind of what happened in the past on the campus. I have dug through the campus advisory documents. I think I sent you guys links to kind of poke around in there and see what happened back in. Twenty seventeen. I think some of us were even a part of some of those discussions as I was reading meeting minutes. So might. Be able to give, um, some information of kind of like where we were at and where we're going. And my priority that the campus, we definitely have a significant ADA compliance issue down at Memorial Stadium. We do, we are getting, um, handicap accessible porta potties will be delivered.
Probably next week.
Probably next week. So that will happen, but it is definitely challenging, um, at Memorial. And you know, the plan was always for the amenities building, I, I believe, you know, back in twenty seventeen and it just didn't happen. So. Just to really study where we're at with that to see if we can make that possible. But again, we'll be studying a lot this year. This will be on every agenda. And we'll have updates from whether it's Dr. Hunter from, you know, I, I think that she had already contacted Gail about getting updated costs on. The feasibility study that was done had a laundry list of prices and that's the best way to describe it. To just get some updated pricing, if that's possible, to see kind of what would it take to complete that amenities building, which is again. Bathrooms and a concession stand and kind of the other, um, thing that the advisory committee studied was adding a track. To the site when you enter in from, uh, Walden Street. So on the left. On the landfill property, there was discussion about that and, and everything kind of paused and it paused and then COVID hit. So just to really reengage in the improvement to the high school campus. I, I won't use the word completion. I should use improvement.
I'm going to correct your word pause. The road had to get done. All of you, it finally is being completed. So now we can talk about everything else.
Cause that was definitely step one.
That was step one.
And again, you know, our high school has been built for eight years and we finally just got the road. So, you know, it's very exciting. It's going to be exciting to drive out there and have a. A road that is very drivable, which it wasn't before. So, and the lighting will be upgraded. So that's all great. So I just wanted to let you all know that this is very much something that we are going to discuss as the year goes on. It's going to be part of our goals to kind of just. See where we're at. And so I will open it up for discussion to all of you. Um, and if you have anything to add, Dr. Hunter, feel free to chime in at any point.
No, I mean, this was in, within my tenure, so I've got a lot of the information and luckily we know where it is and all that. I think my ask is that. Not that we agree with every, the necessary conclusions, but there's been a lot of homework done and it will be, uh, fiscally efficient if you use some of that as a starting point. So. That's one of the goals, I think, is to work off of some of that other information to then further the plan and obviously update it. So.
Is Gail charging us to give us new quotes?
I'm going to talk to him tomorrow. I got a nice response from him to ask that question and we're going to be on the phone tomorrow. So.
I, I don't want to oversimplify this, but, uh, I think it was five years ago, four years ago, we, uh. Uh, looked at the code that said forty four toilets would be nice and we'd get a variance and put in twenty two toilets and we couldn't find, uh. Any living person who wanted twenty two toilets down at Memorial Field or could justify the use. And so that was one reason why we let this sleeping dog sleep, if you will. Perhaps there were other reasons. Nonetheless, um, one of the things we discussed was could we, uh, uh, work at the legislative level? To see that this kind of onerous code didn't require this stuff that some people think is silly and costly. And so I think we should, uh.
I can offer a little bit more on that just because I've been really working on plumbing code, both for the gender neutral, more for the gender neuter side, but I've learned a lot. They are a very insular group with, uh, no direct connection to a whole lot of oversight. So. We've been trying to work some of those angles on the, the gender neutral part and finally got enough pressure on them to call a meeting to have the discussion. It's very hard to influence them and they're a very united. Singularly focused group. And this is changing code is a very long, hard process. I've been on meetings, watching other districts go for the variance to get. The half of these big numbers and that seems to be granted fairly smoothly. Once you get a design made. But they're not wide ranging and, and changing and I, the, the, the path from here to changing plumbing code is very unclear. Very, very unclear. So it isn't, it isn't Massachusetts law. The guys, it's truly plumbing code. Determined by these folks on the plumbing board that are appointed. So. Tricky.
And can I ask?
By, is it gubernatorial?
It seems to be, yes. So that was one reason we've been trying to really work the new gender neutral part with the helium administration coming in, hoping they're more up. But even getting it to their radar has been tricky. So.
And can I ask that twenty two, is that a split between genders? Twenty two total or twenty?
Twenty two total.
Twenty two total.
It was forty four total. Now it's twenty two.
And when you look at capacity of that stadium, I mean, I, I know twenty two sounds like a huge number, but. I don't feel oh, twenty two is a huge number when you see a full stadium of people there.
That's no, it's the frequency of how often that happens.
Twice a year.
Churches don't build parking lots for, for Christmas and Easter and I don't think we, we need to build for three times a year.
Well, we do have to build something though, in the absence of being able.
We are delighted. We've got this handicap unit coming in. Thank you.
Well, but I will say in a porta potty, I mean, and I will just speak for, you know, we, we're doing a lot of D E I B work here and we really need to think about. The accessibility of what a porta potty looks like with a wheelchair in it. And we do have fans that do come to games in wheelchairs and I've seen it. And at nighttime and I'm, let me just finish my thought, please. And so at nighttime, just think about what it is to be in a wheelchair in a bathroom. And transferring from a wheelchair onto a porta potty. I'm just going to say that out loud.
We just wait to see the numbers.
Yes, certainly, certainly.
It was, it was just over a million five years ago. So.
So if it's one point one, maybe we can talk.
Yeah, I don't know.
A lot of, it's a lot of area though.
Having lived the middle school project, I don't think it's going to be one point one.
Area down there as well.
It's what?
It's gobbly up a lot of that area.
Of, of that.
Let's just, let's see the numbers.
So we're, so that's why this is going to be on our discussion. Um, and we'll just continue to give you updates on that. Yeah.
Oh, can I just out loud socialize that the turf has to be part of this discussion, at least as a reference, if we're going to have a full campus improvement discussion, we. We were out there yesterday with Aaron Johnkis and, um, he's giving us an anecdotal two to three year turf replacement. And now maybe that's. A little short. We were up on Doug White, which those are actually falling apart. So the town's got to see what they're going to do, but. Uh, I don't think we want to lose track of the fact that turf's on this list.
Legislation that P pass spanning. So we might be having a bigger discussion about.
Yeah, no, none of these are going to be simple.
Discussion at schools with us right now. So, okay. All right. Um, anything else? Okay. We'll move on to the BD center signage. So, um, you have a photo and I think Erin can probably share that. Well, you don't have to share it. Actually, Erin, we have, we have it. We have requests from Anna McEwen and she is requesting to put signage at both entrances or someplace else. So she is coming to us and I've shared with all of you, there is a town bylaw about signage. So we need to have a discussion about what do we think about these signs, the area? How do we feel about the town bylaw? I mean, it is what it is. So if you, if we can just open it up for that and see where we're at. Cause I have no idea where anybody is at about this.
We're just talking, then we'll vote next week?
We're just talking right now and then we'll see where it takes us. This is very free, free form. Cause I, cause I have no idea how anyone feels about signage at the, at both entrances. So.
Where would it go?
Well, so I don't know exactly where it would go. And when I read the bylaw, you know, it does say that there's one. Um, I think it was, let's see, in section five, signs for all districts. And it, we are a non-commercial building. So it says one sign, including bulletin or announcement board, identification sign or entrance marker, which we have. Is allowed for the principal entrance to a non-commercial building, not exceeding twelve square feet in area, which I. Apparently they probably applied for a variance last time because I think our signs do exceed twelve feet. So we're going to leave that there because that is in the past. And we were not, none of us were on the school committee then. So we've inherited those. One additional sign not exceeding twelve square feet is also allowed. If the establishment has frontage on a second public way, which we do. Up to nine additional square feet of signage is also allowed to provide additional information to users on the site, provided that no single sign exceeds. Three square feet.
So Anna's ask, just so I can read it to you, so you're clear, um, install signs at both driveway entrances on Walden and Thoreau Street. Placing them in the general same area as the school's entrance signs.
I can understand why they want it. It's, it's a busy place. Um, I'm curious about this policy. It refers to. Non-commercial, but, uh, if we wanted to get technical about it, one, uh, does it apply? It's a conquered by law and that's a regional property, but I think the answer is yes, I heard. Um, I'm curious about that. And then secondly. Uh, if it refers to a non-commercial institution, well, does that not apply once for CCHS and a second time for BD?
BD is commercial.
We must have a memorandum of, of understanding with the BD center.
It's our property.
We have a lease.
We have a, yeah, we have a lease. In the, uh, know that we'll all work with each other pretty much. I mean, I've read through the agreement. I don't know if it has.
Why are you so convinced the Concord bylaw applies to us?
Uh, because back when the high school was built, the Concord bylaw did apply to us. I read, I read all sorts of things back on the Concord Journal from the prior building inspector and things like that. So. I don't know if the Concord, because is it on our campus or is it a town right away where our signs are installed?
Yeah, like doesn't the town have like the eleven feet?
Somebody find out?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think we need more information, probably, um.
I'm inclined toward cooperating, but let's work out the details. I mean, I think it's a genuine need.
So isn't in front of our high school sign.
Well, I mean, I guess, you know, I have some concerns about like in front of the high school sign and, you know, we, it would determine, we'd have to figure out placement. And then it's also, it doesn't look like our high school sign, right? It's not in the same. Not even close. So there is that thought. So does it fit there? And then I would not want us not to have student events like on sandwich boards. Which they do frequently for concerts, musical things.
Because of that sign. I was thinking about this. I don't think the temporary signs count towards the bylaw.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, I don't think they do, but I think.
Little sign, uh, says to go to the upper fields, the Doug White field. There's a little sign.
Yeah, we have number of small white signs, black print that try to help you with the wayfinding on the.
Right. So we.
Not so intuitive.
Not at the entrance.
No, no, I get that. So if you could just find out if that's Concord land or regional land, like what's the, what's the?
I also was a little, oh, forgive me. I'm sorry. I, I was a little puzzled that it didn't reference the town of Concord.
That the, the sign.
Just says BD and most, most town facilities reference. So it's just, again, that's not for me to.
I think she's just trying to get right to the point of find my building.
But if we're going to do it, uh, does she want to pause just for a sec? Check with Megan or check with.
And if she's pausing too, I mean.
Yeah. And has this already been printed?
She did already buy them and then ask.
So, okay.
That's, but that shouldn't influence our decision.
Okay. I guess my, I had a couple of questions. I, I don't love the idea of them being at the entrance. I hate to say it. I just.
You can say it. I mean, this is discussion.
It just doesn't, it doesn't feel like, I don't know. I like the entrances frankly, and I, I don't. But I, I fully understand that there's a need for the BD center sign. And I wonder if just had like up the road a little bit, if you could say like BD center this way or. That parking lot is so confusing. Could it, could there be a big sign at that?
At the parking lot entrance.
Parking lot entrances or I, 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 I want, I'm sure there is a way that we could like meet in the middle, but I, I personally do not love.
Or suggest another spot. She did say that.
She absolutely said, or tell me what you. You might have a good solution there to put them more in the campus.
You're pulling, you pull into the high school entrances and you go, you know, to your point of, we have other little white signs that send you to the fields like this way to the BD.
Well, and could we bake, could we do signs like those that are more in keeping what we have? These seem. Yeah, to your, I don't know, maybe you made this, started to make this, but they don't seem to, they're not in character with the rest of the signage that I have a. I have issues with that.
So maybe to Court's point of if it said town of Concord BD Center, it would feel different. It just feels like very, um.
Commercial. What?
It's their brand.
It's not a critique of the BD center. I just, it's a, it's a being thoughtful about the entrance to our high, our regional high school. Wonderful. I love the BD.
And I think that Welland has something similar, except for their pool is part of their high school campus. So they don't have signage at their entrance.
Their pool is easier to spot.
You can't miss it. It's right there. You don't know that the BD center is really a pool, right?
Or that it, what it is. But to your point, the, that could be solved.
On the road.
On the campus. That's part one. You could solve it that way. On the campus. That's part one. You could solve it that way. And then two, my overlay of your comment might be, would, is there opportunity to create signage that is more in keeping with the character of the campus? These seem not to fit in.
Yeah, yeah. I would agree with that.
So maybe ultimately we look at a rendering that shows it in onsite relative to our own current signage.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because the bigger question, does this help you navigate that property when you arrive to your point?
Yeah, right. I think. Because at the entrance, if, at the entrance, so if you're putting it into your maps, like, you know, your navigation, it's going to bring you directly to the BD Center. But at the entrance, it still doesn't tell you where the BD Center is.
Yeah.
That's true.
No, it's.
Oh, okay. Okay. So I mean, the part, I like your suggestion of the parking lot.
The parking lot, I, because I, I find that the whole.
It's confused.
Very confusing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's sometimes.
Navigation once you're on campus.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be, that's a compromise. I also would be happy to look at other designs. I don't know. That's why.
Yeah.
But I'm one, I'm one person.
Well, now you're too. What do you want me to tell Anna?
That we're still going to, we need a little bit more investigating. No.
You're, you're pretty crystal clear that what she thought isn't going to be the perfect answer. So I just want to know how to guide her.
I did hear that we want some more clarification from the town if this bylaw applies to that. So we should get that. And then I think you can tell that we had a discussion and some members feel, I think you can be a little bit broad. Some members feel as though another placement not at the entrance might be more amenable or a different type sign at the entrance. But we still, we do have to solve the bylaw situation first. It'd be number one.
And I, I would add, let's not build in more inconsistencies in the science up there.
Yes. I'd agree with that.
Oh, yeah.
Lori, do you feel strongly one way or the other? What's your, okay, no.
I have no opinion on this at all, other than please preserve my really good relationship.
But I think you can tell her it will just continue to be on our agenda until we seek out a little more clarification.
And that we understand the need, like we understand.
I can just, I think she's going to say, well, if they don't like the blue, what do they want? And I want to be, we're going to have to be more guiding than that or give permission. We can't keep having her try stuff. Very fair.
Very fair.
Okay, good.
So we'll get, we'll hopefully get an update before our next meeting and we'll talk about it again next week. Well, yeah, it is already Tuesday and we have to get it by Thursday. So it might be September. Just tell her that. All right. Thank you for that. And then on to our student handbooks. So you have, there's the K to five, CMS, the CCHS handbooks, and they have been updated. This is part of our charges of school committee to approve the handbooks and we did not approve them in June, as you know. They will go on the calendar for next June. We'll put them on the calendar to prove in June, but because they needed some summer work, that's why we did not approve them in June. So I will turn it over, Dr. Hunter, on the handbooks.
Yeah. And the changes are broadly the same across the three handbooks, three main, two main goals, really. One was to be sure the discipline language reflected the restorative justice requirements that are now in the Massachusetts law. So we got language from district council that all three books reference now. The other was really to be sure that the books got closer. I'm not going to say we're all the way there, but closer to synced up with your policy work. Because we realized the last year or two that we'd gotten pretty off track of the books reflecting your updated policy, which obviously is problematic. So all of them reflect the same policy changes, which are just in the comments there and linked. So the big ones certainly being discrimination, harassment, some of the really serious ones that need to be synced up. So hopefully this was a new trial to see if the way to, because there were so many things, rather than redline it and have to wordsmith every word, give you the links to the comments that showed the changes. And we replaced whole sections. We didn't go through what was already there for harassment and compare it to the new policy. We just, we're just to replace it. So in that regard, I think that helped it to be more efficient. So those are the high level things. Obviously the other tweaks are for updated names and logistical dates and things like that, that we update every year.
I think some more of that needs to be done.
Yes, I think you could.
Stop reading Mike Mistrillo's name.
Well, the high school one's probably the most challenged in that right now, because I had to get it to you before they had had much time in it to do that work. The rest I think are closer. So we will proof for all of that.
That'd be great. If we could look at corrected copies before we, that'd be terrific. Do we also have handbooks for the preschool?
We do have a parent book. I don't know if we actually call it a handbook, because to my knowledge, it doesn't have discipline. It's more of a parent guidebook than a legal handbook, which is worth discussing now that you make me say.
Do we have a Metco book?
We do have a Metco procedure book. I'm not sure I'd say it was handbook per se.
Legal.
Yeah.
This is.
Okay. These are the guiding documents for K-12.
But they're synced up with those other two?
Yes.
Who does that?
On the Metco handbook. And I did have a big concern. It said, do we have cameras on our buses now?
We always have.
Well, we don't have that in our policy.
You have a, you have a camera policy.
Facilities only. So that's been very controversial in Cambridge and. So.
You've had my whole time here, there's cameras on the buses. Yeah. I assumed it was a longstanding thing.
On all of our buses.
Almost, met most of them.
Okay. That's something I think we need, I, policy.
Is it in our handbooks that the cameras on the buses?
Well, I thought so, but now I'm going to want to double.
No, I think it's in our handbook, but maybe not in our policies.
That could be.
I think that's probably the case.
Yeah. I'll double check that, but only the X Y. I was like, I. Yeah.
You're saying you did see that in the Metco?
Yeah.
Book. Is that online?
Yes. Online. You can access that online.
So a couple of things also, our policy is out of date, but I think it's important that we call out Narcan at the high school particularly. And who's been trained. Kind of important thing, right?
Let's see where that could go.
Uh, on this middle school, it, right at the top, it says, click here to do your voice matters, but I don't think we have that anymore.
Do you have any of a page reference there?
It's the top page, right.
Okay.
It's under, it's under your name.
Got it.
And I just, in general, now, I'm not really clear about the bias reporting. Is that going to be K-12?
It, it is. We're going to roll it out over the course of this coming school year. So I don't think it's handbook primetime ready yet, but it should.
So as part of that, if we could just have a one stop online bully reporting harass, most districts have collapsed that into, you know, so you understand what the policies are, the laws are, and you have an online reporting form for bullying as well, right? We don't have one now.
Yeah, it's buried in the policy right now. So we don't have an online bullying piece. We purposely made this other one online. The webpage, we're actually in works right now to revamp the entire webpage. So will you remind us of that in January, once we get a little more custom start to that? I'm sure we've talked on how to make it user friendly.
Back to Narcan, if you do want to follow up on that.
Yeah.
The Act and Board of Health is the local recipient of a state grant and they're doing training in September.
Okay, great.
And you can just jump right into it and get, get free kits if the nurses don't already have them.
We should, usually Concord Fire provides them, so we can just double check, but sure.
Here's the question. Has the medical handbook been updated and do we do that, those updates with the other handbooks?
So the Metco book hasn't come through here. It's not got the same legal process is attached to it. It's more procedural than formal, the way this is. That gets updated every year and then shared with families as an information tool. So we can talk on that. We've never brought it here for approval. We usually just make sure it's aligned with the ones you are approving. So does that make sense?
Yes.
Have you seen it, Sharon? Do we need to send you the link? We'll be sure to get you the link.
Yeah, I can put that and I'll put that in our drive so that it's in there with.
Sure.
All the handbooks.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
And our camera policy was updated. It is a buildings and grounds facility policy and it was updated in November of 2020. So it didn't get added in there on buses.
I think, to be honest, it was, we were behind on that one too.
Yeah.
We had cameras up before the policy was in place. So now we're just going to get caught up on the bus one, the way Cynthia is suggesting. Sharon, policy. Love us cameras.
But I think it is in the handbooks. It's just not in our policy.
Yeah, I don't.
In all our handbooks.
And now I'd want to check. I wouldn't want to be wrong.
Parents are very much aware that they're.
People didn't know, but.
Yeah. Okay. All right. And anything else on the handbooks?
So we'll, we'll have some revisions on the handbooks and then we can vote on them. Right. So what's going to be tricky is when we bring you the clean versions, it gets harder to track the changes.
Understood.
Yeah. So, but we'll, we'll get those to you over the next few days.
So we won't vote on them next week. That'll go into.
Well, we actually have.
No, it can't. You need to vote next week. So, okay.
Yes. One piece of feedback is probably not going to be something that can be accomplished this year, but always was a confusion, confusing thing for parents. Is they have a lot of, now they say contact the assistant principals. Well, there's no more, you know, or this, or contact the principal for that. Well, there's more than one principal. So maybe when they're saying to do specific things, if they can actually say, either say, contact anybody or pick, now we have, what's?
Co-principals.
Two co-principals and we have two assistant principals, one for curriculum and instruction and one for the assistant principal of student life.
Right. So I think that would probably start to become easier to say, put specific people's names in it. It might not be something, I know how busy it is this time of year. So if it's next.
I know there's some discussion at the high schools. I've, I've been up there this week with them and I, I know there's going to be some clarification going out. So.
Something that goes on the website and not in the handbook.
Yeah, right. It might actually be more friendly.
Right. I had a similar thought about like very minor, but like putting Denise's name by human resources director and Angel by student service.
There's reasons we stopped because it's hard. You've already named Mike Mistrillo has not changed since we didn't catch.
Yeah.
Double edged. Yeah.
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 It's just the, like where those were, it was all under like bullying and like the hardest thing that you want sort of a name to, but I under, I understand.
Yeah.
They might not be going.
Had names and then a couple of years, the names don't get changed and then they're.
It's a minor.
Yeah.
All right. So we'll be ready to vote on those Tuesday, because that is our last meeting.
And every building is having a school improvement council between now and Tuesday, so that if any of those councils have any feedback, I know there's a little bit of tweaks that are coming from them too. So I'll have those for you.
Okay.
Do we have feedback from principals? I know it's very premature about the councils and, and membership. I know that the high school had a struggle.
Yeah. So right now they're trying to regroup last year's members to approve the handbooks, which I know is proving to be a little bit of a struggle in August. And then they'll use September to reset the committee. So hopefully it won't be a struggle. Yeah.
Great. Okay. So if there's something else, I will adjourn meeting of the Concord Carolina Regional School Committee. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We'll see you next Tuesday. Right? Just quick.
Great year ahead.
Great year ahead. Exactly.
There we go.
It's getting exciting.